Good evening, President Viascas. We are recording and it is 5:15. If you would like to call us to order.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Allen. I call the meeting of the San Juan Unified School District Board of Education to order. There are two closed session items on tonight's agenda. Personnel matters, education code 44929.21B, non-relection of probationary teacher, and conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code section 5495.6.9, section D subsection 1. Name of case Magali Kincaid Benito Juarez Neighborhood Association, Neighborhood Elections Now, Juan Iglesias, Carolina Flores, Damaris Canton, versus the San Juan Unified School District complaint for violation of the California Voting Rights Act, and in the alternative for violation of the Voting Rights Act of 1965 and the California Constitution, Sacramento Superior Court Case Number 34-2020-00286475. I think I got everything. Mr. Allen, will you please give instructions to those in attendance via Zoom on how they can raise their hand if they have public comment to offer on the closed session agenda items?
I would be happy to, President Viascas. If you've joined us on the Zoom meeting tonight and would like to offer a comment on a closed session item, now would be your opportunity to do so. If your comment is on another item, we would ask that you hold your comment for a later opportunity. To offer a comment, please use the raise hand feature located at the bottom of your screen with that little raise hand button. If you've dialed into the Zoom meeting tonight, you can press star nine on your telephone keypad to raise your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Do we have any public comments for the closed session item?
We do not have any hands raised at this time, President Viascas.
Okay, we have no visitor comments for the closed session item. We will now move into closed session and we will return to open session at 6:30.
And the board is moving into closed session. They will return to open public session at approximately 6:30 this evening. If you would like to stay on the Zoom, you are welcome to do so until that time, or you may rejoin us at approximately 6:30 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. I call the meeting of the San Juan Unified School District Board of Education back to order. This meeting is being audio and video recorded, and the recording may capture sounds and images of those attending this meeting. The recording will be posted to the district website. Presenters will participate via the Zoom platform and public attendance is provided via the Zoom platform as well as a live stream on the district's YouTube channel. We thank you for joining us and ask for your patience as we use this format in an effort to maximize access and participation during this time of social distancing and other restrictions. At this moment, I invite you to please stand for the virtual presentation of the colors by the Del Campo High School Air Force Junior ROTC.
Ready. Allergan, engage. Gary. Allers. Forward. Arch. Left. 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 Allers. Arch. Allergan. Out. Present. Allers. Please follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation,
Under God.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Gary. Allers. Post. Allers. Allers. Allers turn. Arch.
Good evening and welcome. I'm Paula Viascas, Board President, and joining me tonight is Dr. Michael McKibben, Board Vice President, Ms. Zima Creason, Board Clerk, and Ms. Pam Costa and Mr. Saul Hernandez, Board Members. Superintendent Kern and other staff members are also in attendance. Before we begin, I'd like to review the two methods that are available to submit public comments for tonight's meeting. The first option is to submit a public comment online using the comment form located on the district website, If you wish to submit a public comment on more than one agenda item, please submit a separate form for each item on which you are commenting. Comments received by 6:00 PM today have already been shared with all board members. Comments received after 6:00 PM tonight, including those submitted during the meeting, may be read during the meeting depending on time restrictions. Comments may only be submitted on an agenda item up until the time that the agenda item has been discussed. The second option is on the Zoom platform where you may use the raise your hand feature. When you are called on, you may share a comment via audio during during the meeting. Please note that all public comments are subject to a two-minute limit or approximately 1,500 characters. With that, we are at item D, approval of the minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes for February 9?
So moved.
Okay, and moved by Dr. McKibben. It's been seconded by Ms. Creason. All those in favors, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous. We are at item E1. We have one recognition tonight for Arts Education Month. Ms. Townsend, please begin when you're ready.
Thank you and good evening, Board President Viascas, members of the board, Superintendent Kern, and Ms. Cunningham. We come to you tonight with our annual recognition of Arts Education Month. As we've continued to persevere in our education of the arts, one consistent thread is the love that we all have for what the arts bring to both kids and adults alike. Freedom of expression, love for song and dance, communication of passion, and a general outlet for all of us. Tonight, Mr. Courtney will take us through a presentation where you will see how the arts continue to grow strong and provide our kids and our community with love, passion, laughter, voice, and opportunities for expression. With that, I now pass the presentation to Mr. Courtney.
Thank you, Amber Lee. Members of the board, Superintendent Kern, Ms. Cunningham, and Cabinet, thank you for the opportunity to come before you this evening in celebration of the arts. Every year, we honor the tireless efforts and dedication of our educators and celebrate the joy and excitement of learning that our students experience through the arts. Before I go any further, I want to acknowledge our incredible teacher leaders that are the heart and soul of our department. Michael Ditmer, Elementary Visual Arts; Sarah Brown, Elementary Music; Cindy Teresi, the Before and After School Program; Karen Davison, Secondary Vocal Music; Jeremy Lauder, Secondary Instrumental Music; Cherie Klaus, Secondary Visual and Media Arts; Denny Schofield, Secondary Drama Theater; and of course, our incredible ICT Jan Hammond. I again want to thank Amber Lee for her collaboration, support, and preparation of this presentation. Next slide. During a year of unprecedented challenges and change in education and in our lives, we have found the arts to be more important than ever in keeping students engaged in school and learning, supporting students' social, emotional, and other trauma-based needs, as well as being an effective means for empowering voice and engaging in dialogue on issues of social justice and educational equity. We remain committed to the belief that every child deserves a complete and competitive education, which includes learning in and through the arts. We believe that arts experiences are a key component in improving students' learning, wellness, and life balance. Next slide. We offer a robust, sequential, and comprehensive K-12 arts education. This includes the five arts disciplines of visual art, media, music, dance, and theater. I want to highlight that we are one of the only districts in the region committed to elementary arts education that is taught by content specialists and delivers and ensures that every student has the opportunity to participate in the arts. Next slide. Thank you. This year, as we persevere through the challenges of distance learning, our programs continue to support over 25,000 students at all grade levels. Our teachers and students have developed new and creative ways to engage in the arts, especially in Zoom. I want to commend the incredible initiative our educators to research, collaborate, and develop effective teaching techniques and a completely new approach to their content areas that generally require in-person teacher-student engagement and facilities conducive to arts learning. Next slide. Concerts are now performed remotely or pre-recorded with each student having to play their parts individually. Drama students now perform in front of a green screen and act to a computer camera. Arts galleries are still a collection of our students' incredible works, but now curated on a website or a Google slide deck. These are innovative and highly creative ways to present and celebrate the achievements of our arts programs. However, we all look forward to performances and audiences returning to our MUs, theaters, and galleries. Next slide. Thank you. This year, we celebrate two important honors in our district. First is our phenomenal music teacher Sonia Takanikos, who has served at Churchill Middle School for the last 17 years. She has been honored with the Distinguished Service Award from the California Music Educators Association Capital Section. Second is a music teacher that has dedicated 37 years of her career to the service of our students and community. Janet Thorogren has been honored with the Music Educator of the Year Award, also from CMEA Capital Section. It is rare to have one, let alone two, of our music teachers honored in the same year and as a shining example of the quality arts education that we provide in San Juan and to their dedication to our students, music, and the arts. Next slide. We look forward to the 2021-22 school year and the opportunity for students, parents, and the community to come together in celebration of performances and presentations. We hope that you will come out and support our wonderful arts programs at the next school concert, production, or gallery. We also invite you to attend our many district events throughout the year, including San Juan Sings, Kids Art, and Arts Explosion. Next slide. We have two short videos that capture the moment we are in and celebrates the resilience and joy of our students as they participate in the arts. Play video.
Hi, Mrs. Walker. So. Hi, Mrs. Walker. So. I have my.
I don't know what happened to the video.
We'll get it back up, Gary.
Yep, no problem. I can tap dance, sing.
Hi, Mrs. Walker. So. I have my.
Do you want to just play the video at that size, or are you trying to make it bigger? I don't have control of the video. I'm sorry.
I don't have control either.
Let's just play it at full size.
Yeah, if it's a matter of the ratio, we can just go with what we're getting there, but I'm not sure if it's more than that.
Yeah, let me give it one more try here.
Yeah, sure. Sounds good. Thanks, Raj.
Grace and forgiveness during Zoom.
Does not.
Really doesn't want to get past that video. That's okay. I would suggest we go ahead and go on. Thanks for the intent. Yeah, it sounds good.
I don't know if the other one will play, or if we just want to wrap up the presentation. Either way is just fine.
Let me try playing the last one from my machine.
Okay. And if not, we'll make sure that you have access to it, board, so you can take a look at it. Again, thank you so much for the opportunity. At this time, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Courtney, and to the whole team. Appreciate the presentation. Do any board members have any comments or questions at this time? Mr. Hernandez?
Oh, no. Thank you so much. It was very awesome to see this in action, but the I found the picture that was moving, blinking. That was pretty cool. I like that. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's Costa.
I would also like to offer my thanks and my thanks to each of the teachers. Connections with them in phone calls and emails. They are putting heart and soul into keeping the arts alive with our kids, so we are really honored to have the teachers that we do in San Juan. Thank you.
Ms. Creason?
Just appreciative of the update, and please continue to send us links so we can participate in all the wonderful events that you're throwing in. Also, you know, I don't know if we post these on the district website, so community can also get involved and just check out all the great work that's happening at our many, many schools. So, thank you.
I'll make sure we do that. Thank you.
Dr. McKibben?
Thanks to the 139 arts educators in our district. That's they are the heart and soul of what we do.
I want to echo my thanks and I'm just excited to, you know, be able to continue these well-deserved recognitions throughout the year. Again, you know, we keep kind of modifying, not the way we'd like to be doing it, but, Mr. Courtney, I appreciate your invitation. But as soon as we get back to filling auditoriums, I cannot wait to be there, front row and center. So, thank you both for the presentation, but for being a fantastic representative of many of your colleagues throughout the district and all of the incredible work that is still taking place. We really appreciate it. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution Number A399 proclaiming the month of March as Arts Education Month?
So moved.
And then by Ms. Costa and seconded by Dr. McKibben. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And with that, we are at item E2, High School Student Council Reports. Tonight, we will hear from student representatives from Miraloma High School and Casa Roble Fundamental High School. Welcome, and let's begin with Reem Salim from Miraloma. Please begin when you're ready.
Hello, President Viascas, members of the board, Superintendent Kern, and Ms. Cunningham. My name is Reem Salim, and I'm ASP President from Miraloma High School. So, a big part of the Miraloma experience is the diversity and the culture that we offer. So, we showcase this wonderful diversity through our annual festivals such as the Asian Art Fair, which is coming up. And just like the Dia de los Muertos celebration, the students working on this project created a website that offers an enriching and learning experience. So, this website includes art done by the International Studies students, both paintings and poems, performances, club participation, cultural food, and finally, our most popular fashion show. So, usually, our students from all over Asia dress in traditional clothing, and they showcase it during the gym, but this year, we're adapting it into a virtual format, and we're asking students to submit videos explaining what they're wearing and its significance. And right now, we have about 175 students working on this, and we're very excited to show you what we come up with. Our Asian Art Fair isn't the only event that we have virtualized. A popular year-round event at Miraloma are sport intramurals. It's where groups sign up to play different sports during lunch until a champion is named for each sport. And then this year, we adapted it to our esport intramural games where different teams face off in different video games, and currently, we're playing League of Legends right now. Each game is livestreamed on our YouTube channel where we post our video announcements, and we have had a good amount of students participating as well as watching. Our clubs have also accomplished a great amount this year, specifically Inoya, one of our popular clubs, has not let COVID stop them from making a big impact and giving back to the community. So, this amazing nonprofit club has provided students and teachers with school supplies and more. They made about 50 winter care packages for teens in need this December. They've written and sent out letters to kids' hospitals as well as firefighters. And a big focus of theirs is food insecurity, and they have come up with amazing ways to fundraise this. So, they've done things like restaurant fundraisers at Chipotle and Panda Express. This January, they assembled and delivered over 150 meal packages to the Carmichael and downtown Sacramento area, and they ran out of food. They ran out of food in about 45 minutes, which is amazing. And right now, they're collecting bottles and cans as well as hosting a clothing drive for our community. And just last Saturday, members also helped their communities by cleaning up their local parks. Our Kicks for Keeps Club is also hosting a shoe drive for those in need. And we're all incredibly proud of these clubs for making a difference despite the obstacles. So, our classes have also created efforts to reach out to our students to create a fun environment during distance learning. Our senior guides are keeping in touch with their freshmen to make sure that they have the support they need through things like monthly checkups and Zoom calls. Different classes have also hosted things like hoop games, challenges, spirit weeks, and virtual movie nights for students to participate in. And although we struggle with participation numbers, the people who do go seem to enjoy their time. As for academics, things seem to be getting better for the students who struggled in the first semester, as we're all very used to this format now, and some of us even thrive better in it. Also, we're incredibly proud to have nine of our seniors qualify as National Merit Scholars. And as a senior, I know many of us are anxiously waiting for college acceptances, and we're very eager for the next step, but we're still hopeful for somewhat of a real graduation and chance to come back to in-person schooling soon. Again, thank you so much for your time and giving me an opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you very much for joining us. Always appreciate hearing from our students. I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues to see if they have any questions for you. Mr. Hernandez?
Um, just more of a comment of praise. Really appreciate the the social artwork to reach out for the people in need for food and to acquire shoes. I mean, that's pretty impressive. And and my next question is for you as an individual. And Ms. Salim, if you had your choice, where would you like to go to college? What's your first choice?
Oh, um, it's definitely UCLA, but that's a little bit of like a dream school. But yeah, I'd love to stay somewhere in California, like SoCal. So, yeah.
Okay, dream big. Thank you.
Ms. Costa.
Thank you so much for your report and the work the whole school is doing on behalf of the community is amazing. I just had one question about the fashion show. Will that be on your district website, or how could we watch?
There is a specific, like, special website that they created for this event, so I can send it to you guys once, like, through email or something like that. And then I can ask to have it, like, on the district website.
We'd appreciate that. I would appreciate it. I'm sure others would.
Of course.
Thank you.
Ms. Creason?
Yeah, Echo, I'm really looking forward to the link to your annual event, and I applaud your commitment and the commitment of your peers to continue to celebrate diversity and coming up with innovative ideas, and you know, your positivity really shines. You know, I know that this is a really hard time for you and your peers, and I just really, you know, my hat's off to you for, you know, coming with a smile and bringing the update and doing what you can and, you know, everything that you're doing to just kind of adjust and keep up that school spirit and community. So, appreciate you, and if we could ever be helpful, please reach out.
Dr. McKibben?
I just wanted to say congratulations to your senior guides for keeping connected with your freshmen and so forth. That's got to be really important in these times of virtual learning and connecting to the school. That's really good stuff. Thanks.
Thanks, Ms. Salim, for joining us. I'm Matador myself. I always appreciate the updates, and I want to thank you for everything that you've done. I know that it's a pretty common refrain that our students have been pretty resilient throughout this event, way more so than you've ever had to be or should be. So, the fact that you still approach everything so confidently and with optimism, really, really appreciate it. And I'm just curious. So, I went to UC Berkeley, so I'm just a little bit impartial, but UCLA is a great school as well. So, I'm just curious, wherever you land, what would you like to study? What are your interests?
I'm a little bit on the fence, but most of it's going to be, I think, biology field sort of. Yeah.
Well, not that you asked, but I think it's totally okay to be on the fence. Don't feel like you've got to get it all figured out immediately. So, thank you so much for joining us, and I hope my colleagues will join us in a quick round of applause. Thank you. And next, we will hear from Kaylee Gibbs from Casa Roble. Kaylee, please begin when you're ready.
Hi, Paula Viascas, members of the board, Superintendent Kern, and Ms. Cunningham. My name is Kaylee Gibbs, and I'm from Casa Roble High School. An event we recently had at CASA was an honor roll drive-through ceremony. There was over 600 students with a 3.0 or higher GPA, as well as over 200 students with perfect attendance. This Friday, our Renaissance applications are due, and since CASA has a block schedule, we are fortunate enough to have two Renaissance opportunities allowing us to represent a year of excellence. For senior appreciation, our staff have mailed out handwritten handwritten notes on postcards and customized stickers for the class of 2021. Last week, mock trial occurred, and Casa Roble placed fifth. Another event that occurred in the past week was the Best of OV Awards. Kyle Miller, a senior at CASA, received the Best at Orangeville Award due to his spectacular talent in photography. due to his spectacular talent in photography and film. For our athletics and clubs, at this point in time, we have three clubs approved for activity on campus. And these are our FFA Club, ROTC and Drama. For FFA, there has recently been born a new baby piglets, lambs and goats. And luckily I have a picture of some piglets. But we have some new baby piglets born that we're so happy for. And also this club is hosting their annual FFA Spirit Week right now. Um, and they're doing this to celebrate National FFA Week and tomorrow the dress up theme is Wild Animal Wednesday. So wear your fun animal print to support our FFA group at Casa. Um, a recent discussion we had in our own student government class was about the common challenges and struggles students are facing right now. And mainly they focused on, um, these things that I'll share and it was a common theme that kept on, um, bringing up. And it was finding motivation, the drive to participate, doing well in their at-home environments. Um, this included struggles with distractions at home and easiness to procrastinate and step away from the computer. And also the feeling of being deprived of a more fuller education and social interaction. And that was pretty common with our seniors this year. And another thing we have going on right now with Casa is schedules. Right now, schedule requests are being completed for the next school year and our goal is to have them all done before summer break. We are very excited that the district has provided us the Casa Roble app to help our efforts to notify and unite our RAM community. Casa's upcoming event is a spiritual, a virtual talent show. Through social media, we have spread the word for Casa's students to show us their talent through short videos. This event will take place next Monday on the first, where a video will be posted on social media and our school website comprising of all the participants submissions. We hope you'll be able to watch this fun event via social media or on our school website. Thank you so much for your time and take good care of yourself. Be kind to each other and go Rams.
Thanks, Kaylee, for your report. I'm gonna turn it over to my colleagues to see if anybody has any questions for you. Mr. Hernandez?
Um, just a quick comment, very impressed with the Renaissance, uh, program that over six hundred students have a three point oh or better GPA. If my math is right, we have about what sixteen hundred, seventeen hundred kids at Casa. Is that about right? So is that about one third, one third or in that three point oh? That's pretty impressive. So hats off to you and your peers.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Costa?
Your blend of how positive you are and your optimism plus the reality of the discussions about what you're facing as students really spoke to me and I really want to thank you for sharing that. On a totally silly note, the pictures of piglets are just priceless and we had heard about them being born, but to see the pictures was really fun. And I will be on on March first to watch your talent show. So thanks.
Yay, we're so excited for you to see it.
Ms. Creason?
Just thankful for the report and sounds like that your school has a lot to celebrate and I'm celebrating with you and I too just love all the piglets. I was able to visit your campus and check out the farm, um, right before it was, um, revamped by I think the Boy Scouts or there was a group that came in and did some revamping of your farm area. Um, so I look forward to going back and I heard you loud and clear, um, when you commented on the seniors, you know, having the experience that they deserve and I say it, you know, often I, my heart goes out to the seniors. I mean, everyone's struggling. I get it, but the seniors and the parents of seniors, you know, really get a, um, get a double whammy in some ways. So just my heart goes out to you and appreciate all the time and the effort and just the care into honoring and uplifting, um, this group that has come so far. It has completed this journey that still we have to figure a way to celebrate, um, those successes. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Dr. McKibben?
Uh, Kaylee, thanks, uh, for mentioning the, uh, the mock trial, uh, team. I, I remember going to a whole bunch of those, uh, a few years ago and so forth and, and, uh, their fifth place, uh, fifth place in the county, that's, that's pretty good stuff, uh, and, and keep moving up. Thanks. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Kaylee, for, again, for joining us and for the report on behalf of the Rams over at Casa Roble. Really, really appreciate it. Can't wait to go, go over there and maybe see the, see the piglets, but appreciate the full report. And again, uh, just thanks for, for bringing a full report and again for all of your optimism and, um, just your energy that you bring.
Ms. Viascas?
Mr. Kern, yeah.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to show, I, I wanted to show Kaylee. So I was glad you showed the pictures. Kaylee, I'm gonna show my picture here. Can you see the piglets? So I was actually there the day that the piglets were born. Just shortly afterwards and took a bunch of pictures and was just randomly visiting the school and they invited me down there and the one little guy that was laying there, I think, had been born like thirty minutes before. So it was just, it was a lot of fun and it was kind of special to me because my father grew up a hog farmer up in Canada. So I took a bunch of pictures and sent them to him. So it was, it was neat to see the, the, the baby piglets, but then to see all the, the goats and sheep that were ready to have babies too, which I think since have. So it's neat to see how many students are out there and supporting that work as well. So thank you for sharing that.
Yeah, of course. That's so neat that you were there that day. That's, you're really lucky. That's really cool.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna ask my jo- uh, colleagues to join me in a round of applause really quick. Sorry that it's virtual, but appreciate you, uh, being here and, um, thank you for your reports. Student voice is very, very important to us. This is, um, the highlight of the meeting for, for many, if not all of us. Um, we appreciate your being here. You're welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting, but know that you've got, um, a lot on your plate and a lot to do. So, um, thank you for joining us and if you've got other things to do, right now is a good time to return to those items. Appreciate you. And with that, we are now at item E three. And there are no staff reports. So we are at items E four through E six. Um, Mr. Allen, do we have any board reports from board appointed district committees, employee organizations or other district organizations?
We do. We have a board report from Tom Nelson with the LCAP PAC.
Mr. Nelson, please begin when you are ready.
Okay, thank you. Um, good evening, President Viascas, board members, Superintendent Kern, Ms. Cunningham. My name is Tom Nelson. I am the chairperson to your, uh, LCAP Advisory Committee. The pandemic has disrupted many regular operations. Our advisory committee is no exception in experiencing those disruptions. A significant, uh, disruption to our regular processes is personnel changes. A loss of continuity of relationships and a loss of institutional knowledge occurs with changes of key people. After having Lisa Parego as our interim LCAP director for six months, we are pleased with the appointment of John Tornator as our LCAP director. He started in that new role last month. We are hopeful that greater stability will return to our committee. Earlier this month, we had our first committee meeting with John. We are off to a good start as we work together to build community connections within our committee. Together, we are seeking ways to compensate for significant barriers which remote meetings present compared to in-person meetings. As board members know firsthand, uh, can experience tonight, with Zoom meetings, it takes practice to create robust, interactive discussions. Workgroup productivity and cohesiveness have diminished compared to past years. This has presented particular problems for onboarding new members and for members that use interpretation services. The committee was provided a condensed crash course on LCAP student groups, indicators of progress in our district's strategic framework, uh, at our February meeting. That crash course hopefully helped inform some of our newest members, uh, and public visitors who missed LCAP training in August. When the pandemic hit, uh, in the, and with changes to LCAP by the state, staff used regular meetings to gather community input and provide, uh, many presentations to our committee. Uh, this was a sharp contrast to the regular work we usually do with, with data. February's meeting repeated a lot of material presented just two days earlier to this school board. While we appreciate staff effort to keep the committee informed, we suggest in the future that that type of material be provided in advance to our committee. That will save the limited meeting time of our committee for discussion and development of recommendations. We want to make a difference in the lives of our students and we are here to serve. A significant achievement of our February meeting was the unanimous approval of revisions to our LCAP bylaws. Those revisions were long overdue as district legal counsel informed us that LCAP committees no longer operate under Brown Act regulations. Those are, that's according to ed code changes that occurred in January two thousand and seventeen. Legal counsel informed us that communications among the majority of members outside of public meetings is no longer prohibited. We are hopeful these more friendly meeting requirements will encourage parents and guardians to become more involved at the district level. That involvement benefits their children's education and lends their voice to decision-making. For future Zoom meetings, we will structure the format to provide more opportunities for discussion among our LCAP committee members. We are also creating an LCAP Leadership and Social Committee to encourage those important socially emotional school connections with our committee members. Uh, the rest of our meetings this year will be challenging, creating a three-year plan for our future, which we hope will be post-pandemic, will be difficult. We look forward to working together to put forward a plan that meets the needs of our most vulnerable students and one that keeps the day-to-day lived experiences and challenges of students and families at the forefront. Uh, I want to thank you and I also want to thank our parent, uh, committee members who assisted me in putting this report together. Uh, I'm available for questions from the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Do any of my colleagues have any questions for Mr. Nelson?
Oh, Mr. Nelson, thank you for the report. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I echo my, my thanks. And so at this time, I think that covers everything for E four and we're now at E five, Employee Organization.
And we have, uh, Bill Simmons with the San Juan Teachers Associations on E five, President Viascas.
Mr. Simmons, please begin when you're ready.
Board members and Superintendent Kern, I'm Bill Simmons, President of the San Juan Teachers Association. And I'm speaking to you tonight regarding the resumption of in-person learning in the district. Notice that I did not say the reopening of schools. Why? Because schools have been open since the district closed sites to in-person instruction last March. The educational practitioners in San Juan Unified have continued to work with students all of the time that the federal, state and county health officials close school sites for in-person instruction. Words matter. In fact, the educational practitioners in San Juan have worked much harder and longer hours this year than in previous years. No practitioners went into teaching, counseling, nursing, social work or speech therapy to do it over Zoom or in a Google classroom. But when educators were called upon to move their practice online, we attended hours of training to learn these online platforms and spent countless hours converting in-person lessons to virtual ones. Educators want to be with their students in person. We want things back to normal. However, during this once in a century pandemic, health officials told us that it was not safe for the students, staff and community to do so. We have always followed the science and health guidelines. The guidance from federal, state and county health officials has been constantly changing and at times has been contradictory to other guidance. However, each time it has changed over the last twelve months, SJTA and the district worked out a plan to provide the highest quality education for our students under the circumstances. Our goal has always been to get back to in-person instruction. However, each time we have been about to do so, the county, state or federal health officials have told us that we cannot. Now, the guidance has changed yet again. Community members have sent me copies of the fourth paragraph on page eight under criteria to reopen for in-person instruction of the new state guidance, which in part states, and I quote, "Grades K six are not permitted to resume in-person instruction until the adjusted CR case rate has been less than twenty-five per hundred thousand population per day for at least five consecutive days." Unquote. Unfortunately, that's where the emails typically stop in citing the guidance. What the school board and the community need to recognize is that the district and SJTA have an obligation to our students and staff to read and follow the rest of the fifty pages of that guidance. The concept that schools are safe to physically reopen is based on following all of the mitigation measures included in the guidance. As the school board should be aware, there are some of these measures that the district has not been clear, able clearly to implement as yet. I will just mention one very important one. Testing. If the district were to reopen in the purple tier right now, they would need to have the capacity to test all staff twice weekly and all students weekly. The district has notified us that they think they could potentially get tests provided by the state Valencia lab run under contract by PerkinElmer in order to meet that part of the guidance. My point here is, we are currently working with the district to make sure that all fifty pages of the guidelines are being followed so that students and staff are safe. We want to make it clear on the record that the San Juan Teachers Association has not once in this past year obstructed the district from reopening in-person instruction. In fact, we have negotiated agreements that have had students in Discovery Club back to in-person services since June of two thousand and twenty. We have also negotiated agreements for students in self-contained special education classes to return to in-person services. Our English language learners are also able to receive in-person services through the opportunities created by our agreements. SJTA has been at the table, working alongside the district since before the March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty decision to move to distance learning. Our leadership and members have worked nights and weekends alongside the district staff to do the best work possible under the federal, state and county health guidelines. The only goal that SJTA has had during this horrific pandemic is to follow health and safety guidelines to provide the safest environment for our students and staff. Our current agreement is that the district will return to in-person instruction when the county reaches the red tier. Currently, the case rate has been dropping. So if the community continues to follow the mitigation plan, laid out by the CDC for mask-wearing, social distancing, hand washing, and not gathering in large groups, we should be there soon. As we have from the beginning of this pandemic, SJTA will continue to work in partnership with the district to bring our students and staff back to in-person instruction. As I mentioned earlier, we will not be reopening school because school has been in session since August. Before I conclude, I want to be sure to thank the superintendent, board members, district staff, and other volunteers, along with Dignity Health, who helped run the vaccination clinic at Del Campo High School this last weekend. I want to end by telling the school board what I told an assembly committee when they asked me, will teachers return to classroom, when will teachers return to classrooms? I told them, and I'm telling you with all due respect, when I come to speak about teachers returning to in-person instruction and you have a meeting room where you can be six feet apart and have space for a socially-distanced audience, but you continue to work remotely for your safety, it is very hard for me to explain to educational practitioners that their safety is less important than yours. I hope you have, have our students and staff safely back in classrooms and that we have you back in the near future. And I respectfully request that you allow us to continue to work with the district to ensure a safe return to in-person services for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Do any of my colleagues have any questions at this time? Mr. Hernandez?
No questions. Appreciate the report, Mr. Simmons, the report, your, yeah, report. I'm sorry. Yes, thank you.
Ms. Costa?
Thank you for your comments. I appreciate it.
Ms. Creason?
I have notes, but I think a lot of them apply to the COVID-19 update, so I think I will save it for them.
Okay, Dr. McKibben? Dr. McKibben, you're on mute.
Mr. Simmons, Mr. Simmons, thank you for making the distinction between reopening and resuming and expanding in-person education. I think that's an important distinction to make. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us this evening, Mr. Simmons, and for your remarks. We appreciate it and thank you also to, to your members during this crazy time. I agree with Dr. McKibben, the distinction between reopening and, and, you know, resuming the previous normal is important. And when we talk about reopening schools, you know, our schools, we learned that they're not buildings. They're people. They're people working very, very hard. So I appreciate your remarks and thank you again for joining us.
Thank you.
With that, seeing nothing for other district organizations, is that correct, Mr. Allen?
That is correct.
Great. We are then at item E7, closed session expulsion actions. Ms. Creason?
The board voted unanimously to non-reelect one probationary teacher employee ID number 578337.
Thank you, Ms. Creason. With that, we are at item F, visitor comment. I believe Mr. Reed is going to be assisting us in navigating our public comment. Will you please give instructions at this time to those in attendance via Zoom on how they can raise their hand if they have a comment at this time?
Certainly, President Viascos. This item is an opportunity for those individuals attending the meeting to offer comment on topics that are not on tonight's agenda. If your comment is related to an item on tonight's agenda, we would ask that you hold your comment until that item is called and public comment will be offered at that time. If you would like to offer a comment on a topic that is not on tonight's agenda and has joined us on the Zoom environment, now would be the time to raise your hand. To do so, click the raise hand button found at the bottom of your screen on a mobile device. The bottom of the participant list is on the desktop Zoom client or by pressing star nine if you've dialed into the meeting tonight. We know that there's a lot of interest tonight on item I1, the COVID-19 update and the return to in-person instruction. If we do get comments on that item at this time, we will gently remind you that there is another time for those and we'll move on to the next general comment on non-agenda items.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. At this time, I do see visitor comments. We've got 16 hands raised. So we'll go ahead and get, get through the first half hour of that and then revisit where we're at. I would like to remind the public that comments are limited to two minutes. The clock on the screen that will be displayed will count down your time. Under the Ralph M. Brown Act, the board is not allowed to comment on items that are not on the agenda. So we are not ignoring your comments. We just can't respond to any individual comments. The superintendent can refer items to staff who can follow up with you. At this time, we can go ahead and begin.
Our first comment, our first raised hand is from Camille Morgan.
Can you hear us? Everybody, you can hear us.
Yes, I believe that that was a comment for item I1, so we will move on to our next raised hand. We have Marina Gable.
Open schools now. Open schools now.
That item, I believe, was item I1. Our next comment is from Carolina Flores.
That should do it. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Wonderful. I was, I wanted to know what.
It's not clicking.
Hello, can I speak now?
Yes.
Yes, please begin your two minutes. Begin. Yes, thank you.
I wanted to know how many of the cultural arts programs are being done that involve the Encina High School and the surrounding schools because it is a poverty area. I, I've not heard about any arts programs for them and what the involvement has been of Latino and Black students in the arts program. It sounds like a wonderful program and that's what I'd like to get back feedback on. But I also want to talk about having on the agenda, the seven-member board that we've asked for. Seven-member board and single district elections, and it's not been on the agenda. I saw Zima at the, one of the other Latino organizations and asked that he put on the agenda. How can we put seven-member board and single district elections on the agenda? Hello? I'm waiting for a response from the school board.
Ms. Flores, the board cannot respond to comments about items that are not on the agenda due to the Brown Act. So we'd ask you to go ahead and finish your comments, please.
Okay, well, my comment about the seven-member board is that we really need it in order to represent the West Arden Arcade District. And there's a lot of Latino families there that have really sincere needs that need to be taken care of. And because Encina High School is such a low-performing school, has the highest expulsion and suspension rate. There's something very wrong about that and that needs to be addressed. And you have a specific plan that addresses those issues. I don't see that happening. I don't see that expulsion and the suspension rate going down. I don't see any of that being targeted by the school board in order to facilitate and remediate this problem that they have there. So I really ask that you put that on your agenda and give a concrete plan of how you're going to reduce the expulsions, how you're going to increase quality education, how you're going to help the students mentor. And if students don't have computers, you can ask any company to provide free laptops for the, for the students. And that's been done before. It's been done in the South Sacramento area. So please, please take care of these students and provide them with a seven-member board so they have their own representation. Five members is not representing that area. They continue to get ignored and they continue to not get any services or the amount of funds that are given to the other schools. Thank you so much. I'm done.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Scott Rafferty.
Good evening. I want to draw a real bright line between the situations you put the district in now and decisions you took selfishly and dishonestly a year ago. You, you promised the community that you were going to districts. And then we had the pandemic. Now, unlike you, unlike four of you, I have a kid in high school. I knew immediately how difficult this was. And all you could think about was using the pandemic as an excuse to get out of this. You went to the governor and you misled him. You misled him, told him the, the registrar couldn't implement district elections, a complete falsity. And now, and your Folsom-Cordova called their, their administration to heel and said it would be a dereliction of duty not to proceed. Folsom-Cordova is open now. That's because people trust the Folsom-Cordova trustees. They're accountable to parents. They don't all live within two miles of the administration building as four of you do. They are connected to their communities and they're trusted by their unions and they can resolve difficult conflicts. You cannot. So it's time to stop spending the district's money, having illegal elections, and move the districts, settle the lawsuits, and do what's right for this district. Democracy has never been more important than in this time of crisis. And the three of you that were illegally elected last November have no right to serve. So please do the right thing, move forward, and represent the parents, students, and teachers of this district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rafferty. Our next speaker will be Ben Avi.
Madam President, board members, Superintendent Kern, I wanted to follow up on my comments from the last board meeting related to learning loss. Because as Mr. Simmons famously said at this point, words matter. And in this case, the words are abandonment and failure. There has been a 353% increase in extreme chronic absenteeism among students who are from low-income families. There's been a 327% increase among students who are experiencing homelessness. Academically, high school students from low-income families with four or more F grades has increased by 325%. For English learners, it's increased by 420% compared to last year. In middle school, those same student groups have seen 480% and 400% increases in students with four or more F grades. Abandonment and failure. Those are the words that matter when it comes to distance learning and learning loss. Look at the data. Look at the impact on students. That is real. Learning loss is real and it cannot be ignored. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Avi. The next speaker will be Magali Kincaid.
Good evening. My name is Magali Kincaid and I'm a parent of two children attending the district. When my child started kindergarten as an English language learner student, I quickly became involved at school, especially after I noticed a lack of communication between the administrators, the school itself, and my, and me as the parent. I would ask questions to one person and they would point me to someone else who might be responsible. I would get little to no answers and was only left with more questions. The more I got involved, the more questions I had but never received satisfactory answers. I share this as an example of the lack of transparency, accountability, and disconnect between those at the top making decisions and those at the bottom experiencing the effects of those decisions, which are the students and parents. I want board members who not only live in the areas they represent, but that build real relationships with their neighborhood and are accountable to their communities. Had I had a board member from my neighborhood that I can build a relationship with and hold accountable, I might have felt differently and gotten some answers. I'm asking you to adopt neighborhood elections. The district is large, 50,000 students spanning 65 square miles. We need diversity of thought, income levels, education background, and diversity of geographic areas. Given the size of the district, I'm asking that you increase the board from five to seven members. And my understanding is that you refuse to increase the board unless the community wants it. While like has been flagged in a previous comment, please make it an agenda item and you might hear from community. But also, we are the community. We are parents, grandparents, community members, and we're asking you to increase the board to seven. And seeing the vagueness of your reasoning, I suspect that this is just another excuse not to implement what the community has been asking you to do for over a year. It's time to adopt neighborhood elections and increase the board to seven members. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kincaid. The next speaker is JK.
Good evening, board members. I appreciate the opportunity to talk tonight and I would like to bring up a few different things. One is, I don't really appreciate that our school board president and a school board member have gone begging to a democratic committee to be heard, representing themselves as school board members when they are not speaking to those of us parents who are frankly standing out front here tonight and would like to have a conversation with you. The other thing is, I don't know what Casa Robal High School that student is representing. They've left freshmen behind. I'm sorry, but you've left freshmen behind. I really don't know. I'm shocked to hear that there are students on campus. That's news to me. The other thing is, if you're going to have schools closed, and sorry, Bill Simmons, but I'm not playing the semantics game. Sorry, Paula, I'm not playing that game tonight. Schools are either open or closed. You barred us today from protesting in front of schools. You called the police on us. We can't get our kids on campus. We couldn't even walk on campus today. Our kids, schools are closed. Let's be honest. Our teachers are working hard doing Zooms, which are quite honestly a horrific way to learn. Either close every single classroom in this school district and get all kids off campus or open up the schools and get all kids back on. You have restricted my child's learning. It is the most restrictive learning environment. And I would like you to put attendance issues on the school board agenda for next time. I want that discussed. Attendance is a huge, serious issue and you are aware of that because I sent you a letter you didn't respond to.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Juan Inigas. Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Juan Inigas.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. Good evening. My name is Juan Inigas. I offer my strongest objection to your efforts to renege on your commitment to implement neighborhood. Or by district elections. This is a reflection of your arrogance, negligence, lack of responsiveness and dishonesty. The board first signaled its formal commitment to neighborhood elections in 2012. It reaffirmed this commitment in March 2020. You have done, you have done nothing to fulfill this commitment. You falsely claim that the advocates of neighborhood elections want in-person meetings in a time of COVID. We don't. You have claimed that neighborhood elections will cost the district millions of dollars. They won't. You have misled the governor by claiming that you are moving forward. You aren't. You are met in private in violation of Brown Act. You've conducted meetings where no public comment was allowed or was curtailed. Out of 997 school districts in the state, only San Juan and 38 other districts have four or more underperforming groups. And Sina is our lowest performing high school. Your failure to implement neighborhood elections and to create seven districts prohibits residents in this area. And all other areas from having a direct representative on the board. And I think as was mentioned earlier, San Juan is one of the biggest districts in the state to not have a seven member board. I share the back to school movement's frustration with your lack of candor, transparency and timings. No wonder there's a recall movement afoot. Congratulations, you have earned it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Cindy Chuck.
I am highly disappointed in all of the board members. They were screaming open schools, which by the way, you are correct and we are out here tonight trying to get schools back in person and you cut us off. That is so rude. And by the way, for Casa Robe, there's no point for us having an app when, and. First of all, we can't even use the app. There's nothing to use it for. It's useless. Second of all, why are there kids on campus? Because I don't think that the people, the kids that are on campus, they shouldn't be there. Because you know what? I'm in fricking volleyball and I'm not allowed to be on campus outside with a ball, but they're allowed to be inside. The ROTC, they're allowed to be inside. They're allowed to, they're probably nine, six feet apart from each other. So I think that we need to get back in school and you guys need to knock it off and get your act together. Because I'm a student and like JK said, you're forgetting about the freshmen. It's our first year of school and it's ruined for me. So thank you very much because. Being back in school has really ruined my mental health and you know, we need to get schools back open. So open up the schools and do something about it. Because honestly, like not being in school, I have no friends. So thank you for that because now I have nothing to do all day. The only thing I do all day is attend Zoom. I get on Zoom at 8:00 AM to, and I'm working because they expect six hours from me. I'm working until like four. And that I shouldn't be. I honestly shouldn't be. So thank you. And get schools open.
Mr. Reed, before we go to the next person, I just want to note particularly for the first two public comments, we were just trying to. Coordinate and add a couple of comments on the agenda item that we made assumptions that most people were going to be here to speak to, but certainly didn't mean to. Cut anybody off. So just note those two individuals. Will be offering public comments again at I1, but of course, public comment now is also available. Please, Mr. Reed, continue. Thank you.
Sure. So our next speaker is Mario at zsc.org.
I didn't see how to unmute. I'm sorry. Anyway, my name is Mario Galvan. I'm here to speak on behalf of the movement to increase the school board members from five to seven. And to move from at-large to by district election of board members. I am a retired San Juan employee, have taught art and Spanish at San Juan High School. Before that, I worked as a substitute teacher in the district, so I'm familiar with a number of schools in the district. So therefore I speak with some experience when I assert that San Juan Unified is failing many of its students. Primarily, but not only, students of color. I believe that several of the district policies are anti-democratic and foster a climate of inequality. Open enrollment and the creation of magnet schools, foster elitism and white flight. Which perhaps we should instead call wealth flight, which creates what are commonly known in the district as ghetto schools. Such as Encina and San Juan High School. This is a problem of democracy and the crisis of democracy is not just here in San Juan, but it's happening in the United States government. Where political partisanship is choking the government. There's a struggle going on in Europe with a group called Democracy in Europe 25, trying to build unity in the European Parliament. And even in the United Nations, there's a movement to allow citizen initiatives to bypass the gridlock of political conflict in the Security Council. So in the spirit of the biblical adage of seeing the mote in your neighbor's eye and not the beam in your own. I would request the school board to look inward and seriously consider changing the board, make it more democratic. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Amy Shafim.
Hi, this is Amy Kasuni and I just want to say thank you so much for honoring Sonia Tuckanicos tonight. She is just a fabulous. Teacher and she remains in the hearts of my children today. Tonight is an exciting evening. You are positioned to make a meaningful change, a very meaningful change in this district as early as tomorrow. I'm here to request that you move forward with two decisions tonight. First, please move forward in complying with the law, specifically the California Voting Rights Act. Currently litigation is in progress regarding the Voting Rights Act compliance. And every day that goes by, litigation fees continue to accumulate paid by this school district. Fees spent on litigation are being diverted from the classroom away from students and teachers. The litigation simply seeks to bring San Juan into compliance with the law enacted two decades ago. Ending disenfranchisement for some and improving representation for students who struggle with the educational achievement gap. This is not some esoteric legal battle. The situation is real in this district. When I served this board as the chair of the parent accountability committee. The data our committee reviewed was stark. I recall the first year the committee reviewed data, one of the grade levels at Encina Prep, I think it was the sixth grade. Had reported only 1% of the class of its students was at grade level proficiency. And the other grades had reported similarly stark proficiency. These students need boots on the ground representation behind the dais. They need a seven member board. Ms. Creason, I commend you for meeting with committee members when you were running for election and giving us your word. That you would work toward by district elections, which would make this district compliant with the Voting Rights Act. Thank you for your trailblazing commitment. I'd like to thank the rest of the board for making comments on the record, standing against racially polarized voting. Please move forward with decisions to make these commitments a reality. Next, I urge you to open in-person instruction. It's a stress on family. You have the power to make a change. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is call-in user Juan.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, hi. I'm a teacher at SJUSD that wants to remain anonymous to avoid retaliation. I'm very concerned that board members are participating in COVID-19 vaccines. When we are already working in person with special ed and the rest of us will be back soon. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Austin Schlocker.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Excellent. This is awesome, Schlocker. I'd say it's a pleasure to be here tonight, but my mother taught me not to lie, cheat or steal. It's not. I'm the CEO of Arden Community Council that represents Arden Arcade, all of it, not just the fake east side like the board members seem to only believe. Everything west of Wad, everything lost, west of Wad Avenue and Arden Arcade is completely ignored by this board. I'm a product of San Juan Unified School District, Los Real Community College District and SAC State. I'm a multi-generational resident of unincorporated Sacramento. I'm here to comment on your ongoing violation of the Civil Rights Voting Act. If you were sincerely working on it as a board, you wouldn't have a current lawsuit filed against you. I'm not even a part of it. We need to go to by district or I like to call neighborhood elections immediately with the seven member board. By district elections increase the accountability of school board members, which obviously doesn't exist at this point and hasn't for many. Probably since I was born and went through this entire district. Neighborhood elections require candidates to live in the area they represent. As of now, you guys just talk about what you're representing and talk, 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 you don't do anything. Creation of a seven member board would allow the district to drop fair and reasonable districts that actually represent Arden Arcade and then honestly avoid unfair gerrymandering. Which some of you have talked about but seem to not act on. Historically, this board has not included resident of Arden Arcade. And that's one of the poorest areas in the state. Think about it. Neighborhood elections limit the need for us to raise over $100,000. I know most people don't realize that, to run for your board seats. That's disgusting. It's absolutely ridiculous and reprehensible. At-large elections theoretically make members accountable. No, it's a reality. San Juan has two of the lowest performing high schools and two of the lowest performing middle schools in the state. We're in the bottom four percent of all school districts in the state. We're the 10th largest school district in this entire state. Get your act together.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Carrie Warner. You may begin.
Oh man, there's so many great things to talk about tonight. First, let's talk about the Facebook page that your teachers are on and on that page. They've been threatening parents. They've been threatening other teachers. They have also been making disparaging comments and you've been made aware of it and yet you don't seem to want to do anything. About a group of your teachers having a Facebook page where they bash the parents, bash the kids. I would love to know what your plan is. Second, it was very disappointing that at all our rallies today, you felt the need. To have enforcement. Vacaville, when they did the same sit-in type rally, their school principal bought them pizza. So I would love to know what we've done to so deeply offend you that you were so frustrated. And felt like we were gonna, I don't know, potentially destroy property that we're actually trying to get back onto. Man, there's so many great things to talk about. Um, I would also like to know why the school board members haven't resigned yet. Not just this year, but in all the years that you have sat on the board, you've proven that you can't do your job fairly. And you've taken money from the teachers' union and you've made it pretty much impossible for anybody running against you. To be able to get a seat on the board. But you know what? I got a little caught up this week with our sit-in rally. But you know, I'm going to get back on it and next week, I'm going to make sure to serve the two board members that I can. With the recall notice and in March, we'll serve the other three. And it sounds like those who want a seven-board member district, I think they'll be on board with the recall. So I hope you guys step down so we don't have to waste more money on doing a reelection.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Marina Gable. You may begin.
Oh. Am I unmuted? I am. Hi there again. Can you hear us? Ready? Open schools now! 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 Open schools now!
Is it just me or did they drop off for everybody else?
I'm no longer hearing any audio, so I think that they've concluded their public comment. If not, there's always I1. So I think we can move on to the next speaker.
Thank you, President Viascas, and thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Brett Uwer.
Yeah, good evening, San Juan Unified Board. My, my name is Brett Uwer, father of a child at Earl Get Elementary. First time participating in one of your board meetings. I certainly understand the policies surrounding COVID response are complicated and, and there are strong feelings out there. You know, I also understand you've been hearing from a lot of parents and that there were some either protests or attempts at protests at various locations today. That's certainly their right. But please know, I appreciate your commitment to disciplined and incremental policy towards our children's growth. And I absolutely appreciate the dedication of the teachers towards our children's growth, particularly during these times. It saddened me to know that our teachers' classrooms are used as a photo op today. And the militancy that has crept into public discourse is, is a bit depressing. But there's certainly, you know, there's certainly been more parental involvement in children's growth lately and their education. But that's a role shared prior to COVID too. Being part of my child's education is a role that I embrace. It has certainly been a difficult period for all, including teachers and the members of this board. And I just wanted to say thank you for your hard work. All of this has certainly been more than anyone has expected. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Our next speaker is Brianna Hewer. You may begin.
Brianna, you might be on mute. Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't intend to raise my hand. I knew to using the Zoom app on my phone. Thank you.
Not a problem. Thank you for joining us. We can go to the next person.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Autumn De La Russa. Russo? You may begin.
I think there was an accident. I'm just listening, not participating.
Okay, thanks Autumn. No problem. Um, let's go to the next raised hand. And yeah.
Yes, thank you. Our next raised hand is Leanne Ortega. You may begin. I'm sorry, this is Jennifer Lancaster.
Jennifer, are you there? Oh, she went to, oh.
Looks like she lowered her hand as well, President Viascas.
Okay. I saw and she also came off mute, so I just wanted to double check. I'll, I'll let you definitely keep. We have Leanne Ortega and Anna Riley left and so just wanted to kind of let folks know that those are the two remaining raised hands. Leanne Ortega, did you want to offer a public comment?
Dear San Juan family.
$80,000 is the price of admission. I'm forced to ask myself that question.
Hold now.
Yes, as I get here.
Yeah, I'm having a challenge as well, but I'm not sure if she can hear us, so I'm inclined to let her use the remaining two minutes. Leanne, can you hear us?
Is it because of this?
Yes. Leanne, can you hear us? Okay, hearing no other comment, I would suggest, Mr. Reed, that we move on to Anna Riley.
Okay. Ms. Riley, you may begin.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. First of all, hats off to Ms. Tekanikos. She was my son's music teacher in junior high, and he is basically playing the bass still because of her. So, great work. I just wanted to say that I know things are very heated right now. A lot of people want to get back to school, but I don't want teachers to not be acknowledged for the hard work that they've been doing during this pandemic. My son is in high school. He's attending Miraloma High School, and his teachers have been phenomenal. They have made themselves available to him. One of his teachers, Mr. Martinez, even met with him on a Sunday via Zoom. So I want parents to remember that teachers are trying their best, that teachers don't have control over every decision that is made, and that teachers still have the kids' best interests at heart. Their hard work is sometimes not appreciated, and it's sometimes not seen by parents, but I feel that definitely should, there should be some acknowledgement of everything they have been doing. So, thank you so much, and I'm also really excited that some of the sports in the high schools are starting. So that's also another thing that I'm thinking is a positive thing, and I really just want to encourage everyone to stay positive. And thank you, San Juan teachers. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment, Miss Cream. Our next speaker is.
I see two more hands raised, and then I want to remind individuals that there's also other opportunities, including I-1, and then another round of visitor comment at the end.
Okay, we will go to Ms. Velvet Cream.
Hi, I'm sorry, my name is actually Scott Allison. I just couldn't change it from my clothing business name because I was already logged into the meeting. Two children in elementary school. I'm just, would like to ask the board for some further information when looking at the safe schools reopening by school district that is provided by the California, the covid19.ca.gov website. It said that the San Juan Unified School District had received $88 million and was actually allowed to open at this point in time, but there was still not a COVID safety plan in place. So, I guess I would just encourage forward momentum on that and ask if the board could, at some point, share the reasoning for why there still isn't a COVID safety plan in place that would make it possible, or at least for the parents to look over and maybe keep moving forward on active, active plans for reopening that involve, I guess, acknowledging the safety issues. But that's the end of my comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This will be, I believe, President Viascas, our final comment and general comment. This is Mrs. D. You may begin.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. Well, thank you so much for listening to me this evening. Here we are a year later after our children have not been in school. I did hear your teachers' union rep this evening say that the kids, in fact, have been in school, when in fact, they have not. They have been sitting in front of computers for the past year, and that is not considered being in school. I bring to attention the people outside that are yelling, and I ask you, and I plead with you as a parent myself and a previous educator myself, that you would listen to them and understand why they are so upset. I have heard numerous teacher comments that have been appalling to me, including calling us parents, people that don't want to babysit our children, that we consider the teachers to be the babysitters. That, in fact, is not the case. Parents love spending time with their children, but they also want the children to be interacting with their teachers and with their peers. My daughter hasn't even met her teacher this year, and that's a shame. The connection that she typically would form with her teacher has not been formed. Her connection with her peers and her other fellow campus members has not been formed, and that's such a shame. She's missed out on almost an entire year and the relationships and growth. I also will draw attention, and I know that some people have brought this to your attention as well, a letter circulating that has been written by a San Juan Unified teacher, where in fact, on a teacher's group on Facebook, they have been bashing the students, bashing the parents, and saying some very, very disgusting comments about us. We're going through it too. We understand they are as well. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your comment, President Viascas. Are you?
Yeah, Ms. Krista Green, I just wanted to see, is your, is your comment about the COVID update, or is it a general public comment?
General public.
Okay, um, this is our last public comment. Krista, please go ahead when you're ready.
I'm ready. I just wanted to thank the board, Superintendent Kern, and every admin within the district, as well as every single staff member. We have worked extremely hard through this last year, and I'm extremely impressed in what we've done. I understand that opening schools is not a district choice. It's a county-wide choice, and again, I just want to give my appreciation to every single staff member in San Juan Unified, as well as board and Kerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green, and I believe that that was the final public, or visitor comment at this time. Ms. Green? There we go. Sorry about that. I'll just remind our visitors that there's also public comment at I-1, and then Agenda Item, I believe it's typically Agenda Item L, is also another opportunity. With that, we are at Item G, the Consent Calendar. Do we have any public comments for items that are on the consent calendar at this time?
Trentor Key.
Mr. Allen?
We do not have any hands raised for public comment at this time on this item.
Okay, thanks for double checking. Do any board members wish to remove any items from the consent calendar? Seeing none.
I don't want to remove anything, but am I allowed to just say something, or do I have to remove it to say something? I'm just gonna say it, and you guys tell me if I have to do something else. I just want to acknowledge there's some, it's a big list of names that we got, and you know, I can't name off everyone that's very near and dear to my heart, that's gonna be retiring soon, Mr. Benita, Mr. Stevens. I mean, a lot, a lot of people, and I just want to acknowledge that, acknowledge appreciation for all that you've done for our district for so long.
We can't pull it and have further comment, but.
I don't want to pull it because it needs to go, but I just couldn't not say anything.
Appreciate your remarks. Thank you very much, Ms. Creason. Are there any, is there any other discussion or questions about the consent calendar? Seeing none, and also seeing no desire to remove anything from the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve Items G1 through G7?
So moved. I'll second.
It's been moved by Ms. Costa and seconded by Ms. Creason. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
All right.
Aye. That was unanimous. Um, we are then at our first business item, Item I-1, COVID-19 update. Mr. Kern, please begin when you're ready.
Thank you, President Viascas, members of the board, staff and community. Mr. Allen is going to present this item, so at this time, I'm going to turn it over to him, and he will present.
Thank you, Superintendent Kern and President Viascas, members of the board. Tonight's item is an update, of course, on our planning and efforts to offer students the option to return to in-person learning. And in an effort to let tonight's presentation and conversation reflect any late-breaking changes to guidance or legislation, which we had hoped would be coming from the state Capitol, as well as the latest health data, we've been updating the slide deck throughout the, actually throughout this afternoon. So recognizing that you haven't had a chance to review the presentation materials, and that each of you certainly have interesting questions, I do want to offer a friendly suggestion to the board that you consider deviating from our standard flow just a little bit, and that when we wrap up the presentation today, you perhaps engage in an initial round of questions and comments from the board, and then we go into public comment, and then come back for another round of comments and questions from the board as well. But as you consider that, let's go ahead and jump in. So we'll start this evening by taking a look at the current guidance and rules for returning to in-person learning. Then we're going to discuss how the guidance has impacted our planning and where we stand in those efforts. And then finally, we'll end the presentation tonight with some conversation around our best thinking on timing, on when we'll see students and staff back inside of our classrooms. I want to remind the board that throughout our planning, going back to last March and into the summer, we've called out these six strategic areas of importance in San Juan Unified to guide our work. Considerations in each of these areas have impacted our decisions throughout our COVID response. There we go. I do want to take members of the board and community back to last July, especially when the board adopted our learning model continuum. It identifies our response to changing health conditions, recognizing that per regulations at the time, we would be required to start in distance learning, and then, based on health conditions and guidance requirements, implement a modified in-person learning model before being able to return to full in-person learning. I highlight this as a reminder that we have had a plan and updated our plans constantly in San Juan Unified since July and throughout the fall and into the spring. Our plans have continued to evolve based on changing conditions, and of course, the changing guidance from federal, state, and local officials, which is where we want to take the conversation next. Throughout the pandemic, health officials at all levels have adjusted their guidance for schools and other industries as our knowledge of the virus has changed and conditions have changed. Each time, we have worked in San Juan to adapt our own plans in response. The latest major guidance revisions were issued on January 14th by the California Department of Public Health. The Centers for Disease Control also updated their guidance in recent weeks. The good news is the federal and the state guidance agree on most themes, including the use of face coverings, the basic need for COVID-19 testing, encouraging but not requiring vaccinations for educators. The schools should be open sooner rather than later, and the responses must be based on local conditions. There are two important areas of differentiation in the federal and state guidance that impact our planning efforts in San Juan that I want to call out for you tonight. The first is around physical distancing. While the federal guidance recommends six feet of physical distance, the state guidance now requires it. This is an important distinction as we look at what level of program we can potentially offer when returning to in-person learning. Second is that the two sets of guidelines differ on when specific grades can return to in-person learning. So looking at the comparison between the CDC federal guidelines and the California Department of Public Health's guidelines for when different grade levels can return based on community transmission rates, those case rates. As we compare these two sets of guidance, once open to in-person learning, both sets agree that schools can continue to remain in-person when proper safety precautions are put in place, and no outbreaks or other concerning events are experienced. As you can see, the state guidelines are more restrictive, though, than the federal guidelines. It's important to note that the guidance does differ when it comes to the low end of the purple tier, where federal guidance suggests that all grade levels can return to in-person learning, while California guidance allows only grades K through 6 to return when certain requirements are being met. It's also equally important to note that both sets of guidance agree that only K6 should be allowed to return to in-person learning when case rates exceed 14 per 100,000 residents, which is a marker Sacramento County has not yet officially fallen below, though we expect and hope that it will very soon. So we've had a lot of questions about why we do what we do, how we've decided to do what we do, and what we're going to follow. And a lot of folks saying, well, it's guidance, so do you really have to do it? And the answer is yes and no. First, I want to know for the board and for our community that we take into account all sources of information when we're looking at our plans and when we're making these decisions. Certainly, that means the research that we find, as well as the research that other folks are sending into us. So for all those parents, teachers, community members who have sent in research that they found, we appreciate that. We do look at all those messages. The input and voices we hear, in their many different forms, from our students and our families, our community and our staff members, those are all very important in the process as well. And certainly, the Centers for Disease Control federal guidance, the California Department of Public Health's guidance, and then, of course, locally, the Sacramento County Public Health Department's guidance. It's important that we draw a distinction, though. The federal guidance is mostly advisory. That's to say, the guidance from the CDC is a recommendation. It certainly is taken into account and consideration, and it plays a big role in the guidance to the state issues as well. But state and county guidance can have an important difference in that they can have the weight of law behind them. As you read the guidance, you will see some of the areas that note where practicable, or if possible. These are recommendations that should be accommodated whenever possible. However, there are other areas that use direct language stating that schools will, or may, or may not. In those cases, the guidance must be followed. So we've worked to keep our plans updated as guidance has changed. This was true over the summer when we released our initial return plans in July, and it was true again in November and December, as we planned for a return and then later adjusted to reach an agreement to return all grades to in-person learning once the county reaches the red tier in alignment with the state requirements in effect at the time. As I alluded to earlier, we were expecting to have additional changes to state guidance develop over the last two weeks after hearing that the governor and legislators were close to an agreement. That seems to have not been the case, though, as we've now seen pieces of legislation offered, but none that seem to have full traction to make it into law or health guidance. We, of course, continue to monitor the situation. So tonight, we want to take a deeper look at what has changed in the last major revision at the state level. I will note that the county guidance has typically aligned very carefully with the state guidance. The state's January 14th release was not a complete rewrite. It built upon past documents, including the Small Group Cohort Guidance and others. There were some important changes and distinctions that have caused us to need to update or modify our existing plans. As I noted earlier, it does bring six feet of spacing as a requirement rather than a recommendation. That's one of the important reasons you see schools that were already open in surrounding areas operating very differently than schools who have or are trying to open more recently. One of the most important changes, though, was that this guidance, along with Cal OSHA's revised guidance, updated the requirements for plan writing and development. Where we'd previously been able to write a single uniform plan, the new guidance requires that we publish comprehensive documents that also address each and every work sites or school sites' specific conditions. In San Juan Unified, our final product is going to consist of three pieces, each posted to every school's website. The first piece, the COVID safety plan, is our overarching district document that summarizes our policies and practices. It has, it's an. It has, it's an evolution of an existing plan we've had in place since this summer that has been located at sanjuan.edu/safereturn. If you go to that address today, you'll see the current existing version of that document. There will be the revised version of that document hopefully later this week. The second element is each site's COVID-19 prevention plan. This is a document based on Cal OSHA requirements that must address site-specific concerns. Where we previously spoken things like how we would handle small spaces in a broad sense, this plan now requires that we identify potential issues and mitigation measures at each site. Our sites are currently working through that process. The final element is a checklist that simply asks us to confirm that our plan addresses the required areas and elements. Taken from that checklist, these are the areas that must be addressed in our plans. While our existing plan addresses most of the areas, there were a few that needed modification or additional language that I'd like to call out for the board. The first is added language around how we will create stable group structures as defined by the state. This round of guidance adopted the term stable group structures and made a defining line between that and small cohorts. Stable group structures are recommended to the greatest degree possible among our general programs. This means limiting students and staff from interacting with other groups unnecessarily. This wasn't our previous plans, but split across different areas. So we've worked to consolidate that language in our updates. The second area was again that change to require six feet of distance. Whereas prior guidance and our plans had called for six feet where possible, we have now made revisions to move to the required six feet of spacing. In alignment with the new guidance, spacing can be reduced to no less than four feet when other efforts to allow six feet of spacing are not possible and additional mitigation measures are used. And the final area that I want to call attention to is COVID-19 testing of staff and students. Prior California Department of Public Health guidance had suggested staff be tested every two months while Cal OSHA regulations, which for those who aren't familiar with Cal OSHA regulations, really regulate workplace environments. Those require that we have testing available in case of an outbreak event. The January 14th guidance recommends that testing be implemented for both students and staff at different frequencies depending on conditions. As you can see in the table, the level of testing increases the deeper you are on the state's risk assessment tiers. And again, prior guidance was to encourage asymptomatic testing once every two months among staff. But as testing availability has increased and costs have decreased, we see this new recommendation which stands to help us stay ahead of any potential outbreaks or increase in community spread. At the highest level of the purple tier, which we sit right on the border of now, this guidance would recommend weekly testing of all students and staff with additional capacity for symptomatic and response testing and potential exposure cases. San Juan has joined the California Department of Public Health Valencia Branch Lab Testing Effort. Through this innovative new offering, school districts can access supplies of testing materials and lab services. We then coordinate the testing deployment through self-administered testing events. This allows those being tested to swab their own nostrils. It does not require the dreaded Q-tip to the brain. We ship the collected samples off to the lab and those tests are, those who are tested are notified of the results directly in 24 to 36 hours. We've not yet settled on how frequently we will ask students and staff to test, or if we will implement only response testing while encouraging asymptomatic testing through county clinics. The other note I will make here is that we are evaluating whether this option will work for athletics, which I'll touch on a little bit later. Right now, the cost for tests through Valencia Branch Lab is set at $55 per unit. There would be no cost to those tested and the district would be responsible for paying those costs or working to ensure insurance companies are billed appropriately. The great news is that we expect that cost to fall sharply in coming weeks and possibly even be eliminated in some instances. Through a variety of strategies, the state believes that they can reduce the cost significantly, perhaps to under $20 per unit. And there is the possibility that FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, may begin to cover the cost of testing students. Regardless of what the testing fee turns out to be in the end, there will be significant costs to the district in mobilizing and staffing testing events. When we talk about testing strategies at $55 a test, we're talking about a potential cost of up to 2.4 million per week in my rough math. I didn't run that through budget. So that's very rough math. In just testing fees, not including those costs for this, how we would staff the testing events and the coordination of those efforts. I want to take a small word walk to highlight for the board and for our community where we stand with the federal funds allocated to us to help address some of our needs. This is one of the common areas we get questions on from our parent community, just as we did tonight. With folks asking, I've heard you got all this federal money. Where's it all going? How's it being spent? So as it was pointed out by our commenter earlier, the state has published this lovely map showing local districts and what type of learning options are available. If safety plans have been posted yet and has a wonderful line on there showing COVID funds received, in our case says $88 million. That would make it seem like we have $88 million sitting in the bank, but we don't. We have been allocated that much, but we have yet to receive most of that funding. We have worked to prudently invest these resources in one-time mitigation costs and measures that have advanced our, and we've advanced our spending efforts, even though some of the funds haven't arrived in the account yet. It's also important to note that the $50.7 million from what's known as S R 2 on that last line of the table was an amount shared with us just last week. So we're certainly eager to see it delivered and put to use for our students and families. Staff do intend to bring more information on this funding and our efforts supported by it to the board in a future item. So let's get back to our conversation about plan development. The January 14th guidance also puts different requirements in place for plans depending on a district's efforts to return students to classrooms. For those attempting to return in the purple tier, plans require approval by county and state officials before a site can return. Once submitted for review, county and state officials have a seven-day window to provide any feedback and ask for edits or changes. At the end of the seven days, if no feedback is received, the plan is deemed approved and we can proceed. If changes are requested, the plan is not approved and we may not proceed until we address the concerns that were given by the county or the state. However, if we return under red, the process is more direct with no review required by state or county officials. I will note that the K6 return in purple does require consultation with employee groups, but given the nature of the document and the importance of safety and collaborating with our employee, the importance of safety, we are collaborating with our employees in plan development under any scenario with the site safety teams involved as well as review periods for employee group leaders. So timeline, when are these safety plans going to be ready and posted? We're entering the final stretches now with the district's safety plan revisions out for final reviews currently and our site prevention plans rolling in now that our staff are back from the February break. So that did slow us down just a little bit. We've kept a close eye on this process to ensure that it is completed well in advance of the county's advance to the red tier. I will also take this opportunity to again remind the board, San Juan Unified has had a plan and modified its plans and modified it again. I know some in our community have questioned why the state's district map of COVID-19 response indicates that we don't have a safety plan in place. That's an indicator that we haven't placed our latest modifications on the website as required. It doesn't mean we haven't had a plan and that we don't have a plan now. What I will also say about this timeline is we do think it will be earlier than March 5th for those second two items. There are about 30 of those COVID prevention plans that have been turned in by sites already. The deadline for other sites is actually tomorrow. So we should have a good sense by the end of this week whether we can get all those wrapped up this week or not. So before we take a look at current conditions, I want to provide the latest on athletics as well. Guidance on athletic programs has been updated multiple times in recent weeks, most recently late last week. This new guidance provides a pathway for the return of sports in our schools and communities depending on the tier assignment of the local county. On the surface, only outdoor low-contact sports such as cross-country golf, swimming and tennis are allowed under the purple tier. However, the latest change last week also provides a path to play outdoor sports listed in the red tier like baseball and cheer, for example, or the orange tier for high-contact outdoor sports such as football, soccer and water polo if specific conditions are met. Those conditions include case rates being lower than 14 cases per 100,000. So we're not quite there yet in Sacramento County. Informed consent of all players is given. And that we engage in weekly testing of all athletes and coaches for those outdoor high-contact sports. So the water polo and the football in particular. As I noted earlier, we're exploring our options and do plan to support this level of testing for our student athletes and coaches who wish to participate. Quick note on vaccinations, we're pursuing absolutely every strategy we can to help ensure the safety of all of our staff members, our students and our community. While vaccinations are not a requirement of our plans to offer the option to return to in-person learning, they are an important layer to protect health and help our educators feel safe. Sacramento County authorized educators to be vaccinated starting February 16th. We're proud that with a phenomenal partnership of Dignity Health and an amazing group of volunteers, we were able to host a vaccination clinic aimed at those in our community over age 65 and educators. We delivered more than 2,200 vaccinations. We estimate that 13 to 1,500 of those were likely San Juan Unified staff receiving their first dose of the Pfizer vaccine last Saturday. Our staff are also accessing other county and private clinics now that they're authorized, but we're excited that our partners will be hosting additional events on our campuses. Late this afternoon, we were actually able to confirm our next event for this very Saturday in partnership with Dignity UC Davis and the Sacramento County Public Health Department, where we'll be able to offer more than 2,500 doses to our community, again to those over age 65 and educators. Information about how to register for those appointments for those who are eligible will be going out later in the next two, two days or so. I do need to thank Dominic Cavello, who leads our health services team. He did a lot of the heavy coordination work for these events as well as our custodial teams, Frank Camarda and Shari Shenowith from our facilities team who helped make the facility open and available. And of course, all of our old and new friends at Dignity Health who have been fantastic to work with and literal lifesavers as well as their colleagues at UC Davis and the Sacramento County Public Health Department. So with vaccination is underway, it's one point of hope. Even more hopeful though is that the rapid and continued fall in case numbers and testing positivity rates in Sacramento County are showing up. We're just a few short, we're just a few short weeks ago, we saw case rates in their 50s per 100,000 residents. As of yesterday, Sacramento County's public health was reporting the seven-day average case rate as 12.9 per 100,000, getting us even closer to the 7.0 rate needed for the red tier. The drop's not from vaccinations. They haven't been given to enough people to make that large of an impact. Our health officials do believe that as we continue to get further from the holiday season with a lack of events and people gathering and as folks continue to adhere to that guidance for face coverings in gauging that physical distancing, that really is starting to pay off and see those levels come down. So we need that work to continue. The state updated its dashboard today. We have the county dashboard and the state dashboard. The state's dashboard is important because its adjusted case rate numbers govern when schools are allowed to consider off, offering a return to in-person learning. So when we have to make those decision points, it has to be off of the adjusted case rate numbers on the state dashboard, not the county dashboard. We're happy to see that the official case rate fell yet again this week, posted just today to 15.3 cases per 100,000. So we're closing in on being able to be below that 14 per 100,000 mark and getting closer to that 7 per 100,000 mark where we'll enter the red tier. We've talked about this before, but it's worth repeating. There's a method to the madness of why the state's case rate numbers don't match what's reported on the county site, which is what I showed on the prior slide. Sacramento County shows a rolling seven-day case rate average. The state's case rate is a seven-day average as well, but it's delayed by seven days to help ensure that all the data is taken into consideration and accurate. So what's typically been happening is that we see the state dashboard closely follow what the county dashboard previews for us the week before. It's not a one-for-one correlation, but it's generally pretty close. So we expect to continue to see the state dashboard trend downwards in the next weeks. And with that, I'm going to turn this slide over to Superintendent Kern.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. I appreciate the information you shared. And this will be the last slide before we turn it back over to the board to have some questions and comments. If you'd like prior, again, as Trent said, to visitor comment as this is really the first time that we've been able to share this with you and go through this. So the big question is really when? We do not have a firm date that we are going to announce tonight. I am hopeful that we are very close to that. We did return to the bargaining table yesterday with our teachers' union. And we do have sessions set up with them for the next three days, both Wednesday, Thursday and Friday, where we will be sitting down with them from 8:30 to noon to try and work through really the changing guidelines that Trent addressed, which we've been faced with throughout the time. The two big ones right there that I want to address are a five-day timeline, once in a red, once in the red tier. Previously, we have an agreement to return, but that is two weeks. Those, that guidance did change on January 14th. So we are having discussions, ongoing discussions about making that change. If that were the case, then as soon as we were to be able to hit a red tier, which the state changes their information every Tuesday, we would be able to return to in-person the following or the next Monday. So that's, that's a big change. That's a positive change. Those conversations are going on. The other, as Trent alluded to, would be the K6 return in the purple tier. I think he laid out really well all of the other requirements that we would need. That's a more challenging conversation that we have and a process to set up. I will say that we are still focused on bringing back all students in that red tier. I am very, very hopeful with how you have seen the, the trajectory that Trent showed you that that will happen sooner rather than later. And I know a board member may actually ask that. I'll respond to that a little bit here. But with the return in purple, we do have a very, very strong interest to bring our elementary students back to in-person learning. Regardless of if we stall out, we're hopeful we keep moving in that direction in the next couple of weeks. But if at some point we plateau and we don't see growth, we have to get those youngest learners back. And those are conversations that we will be continuing to have this week. I don't want to go into too much detail because it is bargaining. And so again, we will be having those conversations in the next couple of days, but are eager to see and hopefully announce some of the outcomes soon that we have from the bargaining with our teachers association. And with that, President Viasquez, I will turn it back over to you and let you take next steps on this.
Great. Thanks Superintendent Kern. I'm going to turn it to my colleagues for some kind of questions and conversation. I just, is that okay if we pause on the screen share? I apologize. It's just how my setup is. And of course, we can return to specific slides if we need to. I just like to be able to see the boxes of people. We'll begin with any questions or comments from Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you. I will ask a couple of questions and then I'll make a comment after we hear public comment on this. Is that kind of what we're going to do? It sounds like. Is that correct? Yes?
Yeah, we were going to do a board discussion and then visitor comment, but of course, if my colleagues want to then return to comments.
Okay. So let me just ask this then. Mr. Kern, very informative report from Mr. Allen. Thank you on that. But I, I think the win is exactly what people want to know. Mr. Kern, based on your assessment, based on the trends, when can we tell our parents? What's a, what's a good goal? What's your goal? I mean, obviously that we have a, a changing parts every day. Understand that, but when is your win?
Well, I, I want to bring students back K-12 prior to spring break. I believe if we continue to trend in the right direction, that I'm hopeful that we will hit red in the next three-ish weeks. If we are able to do that and return five days after that, we could return prior to spring break. I've had some people say to me, why would you do that? Why wouldn't you wait for spring break afterwards? And, and I kind of have two responses to that. One of them is, I, I feel strongly, even when we looked back, we were hoping to open before winter break. And people really felt like, oh, you never really wanted to open. You waited. No, I, the conditions changed dramatically. And you see that even by Trent's graph, but, but I want to return as soon as we can. The second piece is, I think actually the week before spring break would allow us to really focus on two aspects when we bring students back. First being really, there's going to be a lot of protocols and systems that we need to put in place as we bring students back. You know, we think about our youngest learners, kindergartners, first grade who have been out for a long time, but all those young learners. You know, we think about our youngest learners, kindergartners, first grade who have been out for a long time, but all those young learners. Really building those processes back in place. The other piece of it is it would really allow us to focus on relationships when we bring them back those first couple of days. We've heard how important that is both from staff, but also from parents, from students. My student group I talked to, they talked to about how important those that relationship piece is. So in my ideal world, we're bringing our students back before spring break. Now again, the. Really what's going to happen with the trends and, and I'm hopeful that we're all committed to staying safe that we can do that. Trent, do you want to? I saw your hand raised.
Well, I was just going to add Superintendent Kern. As much as Superintendent Kern and many of us on staff, and I know the board live in by these charts and numbers and think we've figured out how to predict them. We're also emboldened by our county health officials. Who are feeling more confident that the numbers also are trending towards red for Sacramento County sometime in March. So they've expressed that to us as well. So that helps us build additional confidence in the timeline that we're looking at.
Last part, Mr. Mr. Kern, you said before spring break for the record, when is spring break?
Hold on, let me look at my calendar here. Spring break starts March twenty-third, so the last week of, of.
That twenty-second to the twenty-sixth.
Sorry. I'm sorry, the twenty, my eyes are bad. Is it the twenty-ninth? I believe is the first day of spring break. So the week before that would be the twenty-second of March.
So that's our, that's assuming that we're trending the way we are. That's a cross on our fingers. That's when we can assume that our kids. At least our K through six are have a good chance of being back in school. Is that a good?
If we're, in my, if we're red, then that's everybody coming back that week. If we were read the week before on the Tuesday before, if something happens and we see. Those numbers improve even sooner. Could it be sooner? It could be, you know, Trent's number showed twelve point nine yesterday. Unfortunately, we watched that every day. The county numbers actually ticked up a little bit to thirteen point one. We're wondering, okay, is that a little bit of the Super Bowl lag that they talked about and the effect of that? You know, we're not sure. But I think as, as everybody is eager to get students back, it really encourages all of us as well to really follow the guidance. Related to wearing masks, distancing. I think as we have the opportunity again this weekend to vaccinate another twenty-five to twenty-seven hundred community members, staff. And that's happening throughout the region. That's important. That will have an impact as well. We won't, as Trent mentioned, see that right away. But, but I'm eager to get students back. And as soon as we have more of a concrete date. Through the discussions with our partners, we will make sure that we communicate that out broadly.
Okay, and I appreciate that, that we are at the bargaining table doing what we can at the time. I'm going to make additional comment. About my personal feelings about this, but I'm going to wait till later on in the, in the discussion. Okay, so I, I will yield to my colleagues.
Ms. Costa.
Mr. Kern. I too want the kids back. I don't think anybody doesn't want them back, but I'm a little confused right now. We have a side letter of agreement and you're back at the table and that's wonderful news that we're back at the table again for bargaining. But if. We have a signed side letter of agreement and there isn't agreement at the table. And we bring students back without that, would that not be? Considered a violation of the contract and cause us to possibly end up in court?
It, it, it could be considered an unfair rate labor practice if we were to, if we were required in certain conditions to. Work through those with our labor partners and we didn't and we tried to open up. Then we, we, we could be in an unfair labor practice.
Okay, and then what would that mean?
It would probably mean that it would be very difficult to open schools because we wouldn't have the necessary workforce to do so. And I think where. That, that's why we really are working with, with our partners and we always have. And really, you know, I'll give the board the credit at the last meeting when we, when we had the conversation. I know the board didn't directly say return to the table, but I think we communicate enough and heard that that was important. And we really had in our previous agreement that if conditions changed, we could do that. So. We sent a letter last Friday. S J T was out as, as was the district last week, certificated staff wasn't working. So we actually sent that letter. They were responsive on Friday, even when they were out. So that we could meet yesterday and identify dates moving forward to come back and try and work through all these other details. And, and you know, there will be details that we have to hammer out as Trent alluded to around testing. Some of those other components, if we were to return in purple. There are more complicating factors to that. We'll have to work through when we get to red. That's a little easier. You even saw that in terms of the, the, the plans that have to be approved in purple where in red that the, you know, we have plans, but it isn't as. A requirement with the state or the county approving those.
Okay, that helps. And I, for one, really like the idea of going back before spring break so that there is time to. Make any modifications that need to happen. I think that's smart on your part if the numbers work out and we can get people back. I have two questions of Mr. Allen. If every student has to be tested, will, is there a process that allows parents to exempt their child from testing?
So testing of students would be voluntary. We would not be able to require testing to participate in in-person learning. We would certainly strongly encourage it, but it would not be a requirement. We just would want to be offering it.
Okay, and then the second question with the six feet, I understand how the six feet will work inside. That makes sense to me. How you, I, I think it'll be hard for kids, but. I understand how that can be created. Is the state also saying you have to have six feet on the playground before and after school at recess? Is that also required as six feet?
So the six foot requirement language is in regard to student desks inside classrooms. But I would certainly highlight that the guidance is to maintain six feet of space whenever possible, including outdoors. So we would want to encourage that to the greatest degree possible. Certainly the elementary playground, especially that is going to be a difficult place. So those are conversations I know our elementary friends are having, our principals and others. On how we help keep those folks safe and part of that goes to that. Standard groups so that we don't have people mixing necessarily. And helping minimize any exposures because we know we won't have everybody six feet apart at all times.
Thank you, and I too would like to come back and make comments at the end. Thanks, Ms. Viasquez.
Thank you, Ms. Costa. Ms. Creason.
Thanks, and I'm going to start off with an apology. I wish I had more time with the slides. So I'm going to ask questions that you already answered just like didn't get to go through my process of absorption. So forgive me for that. So there's a lot of new things that I just now understanding or hearing regarding purple. So. So, okay, so do I understand correctly that sure we county and state guidance would allow us to open or I'm sorry to go back to campus. Send back to campus K through six. That both, both state and county would allow us to do that, but there's a list of things that we would need to do in the way of. You know, safety before we could do that. That, is that correct? Do I understand that correctly?
That is correct.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
That is correct. There are some requirements. It's not just up to us whether we decide to do that or not entirely. We would have to make sure that those plan requirements are done. So submitting those plans to the state and getting those approved would be one of those things. Part of having those plans done and approved is being able to have an answer for that testing strategy. And having that dialed in and having that plan process up and running as well. And then I would highlight that in that K six return under purple conversation. It does not allow under any circumstances, grade seven through twelve to be part of that conversation. And it also does not allow sixth grades at middle schools to return to in-person learning. If they are going to switch classes, if we move them to a model where they would not switch classes, it can be considered. But if we let them do their standard model, we couldn't actually move the sixth graders at middle school back in either.
Trent, can I build off that a little bit too? Because people have said in the past. You're, you're saying there's costs related to testing. No, there's not. You can go to the county and they have all these free clinics. The reality is we're required as part of those guidance. On the school, we can't say, hey, you can get tested for free, go somewhere else to do it. We have to prove to them that we have a plan in place. That specifically states how and when they will be tested. So just saying they could go somewhere to one of these free clinics that, that's, that would not. If, if we said that, the county would say we reject your plan if it was in purple. Trent, would you agree with that?
There's multiple levels of guidance on testing. Some of those are from the Department of Public Health. And then some of those are from Cal OSHA related to workplace. The Cal OSHA ones have been, are very specific about having capacity as an employer to provide testing in case of an outbreak. Or a possible exposure. So those are definite. You have to have onsite ready to go. The guidance around students and staff from California Department of Public Health leaves a little more on that recommendation side where we have some. Leeway in determining how we want to deploy that.
So the plan that's being worked on right now, that's supposed to be done by the end of next week. Is for what? For us to return to camp with, return all kids back to campus five days in the red?
So the plans that we are working on are required regardless of whether we return in red, purple, or at any time. Short of the pandemic going away. So we have to do the plans. If we return in purple for K six, the plans have to go through a, up to seven day review process by the county and state. But either way, we have to have those plans done. We have to have those plans posted to school websites at least five days prior. To the school offering in-person instruction. And they have to address all those elements that we highlighted on the slide, which are existing plans again, address the vast majority of those elements. We are modifying and kind of cleaning up and updating language. And then we're adding the pieces that we think we need to speak more directly to. So it's really an evolution of our existing planning and updating some of those pieces. But either way, we have to have those plans done, whether we open in red or purple.
Okay, so and I'm sorry, this is going to probably be a long process. And again, it's just I didn't get to absorb the slides. So if the plan is the same for if we're opening in red and purple, I guess I'm just not understanding then. It, it seemed to me that the message was all these things are going to have to happen if we knew and different things have to happen if we open in the purple. But it sound, but I think I just heard you say the plan is the same no matter where we open. So I'm not understanding, I'm not understanding where the disconnect is for me.
So I'm sorry, let me clarify. I'm saying we have to have a plan no matter what. Now, what we put in the plan might differ if we're opening in red or purple, because if we're opening in purple, we certainly have to address. All of the recommendations that come with purple. So testing recommendations, for example, are very different if we're in a purple stage than they are a red stage. What I would say though is that I wouldn't expect that we will have much difference and we're not planning the documents that way. We were, we're trying to write them as though knowing that things ebb and flow, that we will see case rates potentially go either way. That we are writing our plans to be responsive to changing conditions so that we don't have to go back and rewrite plans if something changes. To the greatest degree possible. So we're trying to be inclusive of different scenarios. So I. Hope we don't have to change anything, but either way, we have to have a plan done. If that made any sense and didn't just confuse things more.
I think I'm, I'm, I'm getting closer to understanding. So the, the plan we're going to submit. It sounds like the idea is to have it baked so it would allow us to open in. It will, it'll have that level of specificity and that's what will be approved. So what I'm getting at right now is, okay, if we're. And I'll get further into what I'm thinking about with the whole purple thing, but. If we're building this plan and if we're building it just for red and there's a decision about purple, do we have to go back and build a new plan for purple? Or is this plan that's going to be submitted going to cover us no matter when we open?
My expectation, and I know Superintendent Kern's expectation is that we are writing plans that would be approved by the county and state if we were to submit them. So that would allow us to open under purple.
And let me, let me build a little bit more off that. So in purple, it talks about in consultation with. Bargaining groups. So part of that is there, there may be. Requirements that we would build in that are around testing. So we get it approved, we might not have to have as, as. Strict guidelines that we have to follow if by the time we're able to open, it's actually in red. But again, I think Trent summed it up. We're, we're writing plans that would allow us to open in, in whatever. Conditions that we are, but it is more challenging. I think the piece he alluded to as well before was before. We kind of had to have a district plan. Now you, now we're having to also have to have a site specific plan for every school. That was a change that took place. Where when people would say, well, you don't have a plan. Well, we didn't have to have a plan for every school. Now we do, and we're getting that put together so that we can submit that. And so that we're, we're not going to wait. We don't want to wait to submit a plan. Until we hit X mark, we, we really want to be able to submit a plan and have it approved. So we're ready to, to. Open up whenever we can. I, I was reading a little bit today and Yolo County turned into the red and they're like, okay, they're in the red. When are schools going to open up? And a lot of the schools there were saying, well, we don't have this approved or we don't have that approved yet. We're, we're trying to make sure every step we've taken care of so that when we hit red. And we can open in five days, we can open up our entire system K twelve. Really TK twelve, I should always say pre K twelve, you know, our entire system. And so to make sure that we've taken care of everything we need to.
Okay, no, that all, I think that all makes sense and I get it. And I just want to make sure, let me state my intent. I'm hoping. That whatever we're submitting and it sounds like it will, will allow us to open. To go back to campus. In the purple. So I, we wouldn't have to go back. And that's what I think it hurts. So I'm just going to move on. Correct me if I was wrong. Um, I, it's my understanding if there was a decision to be made to send K through S six back to campus now. As guidelines would allow, but so let me. I'm sorry, my notes just don't apply the same as they did two hours ago. So. Do, okay. Before this presentation, it was my understanding that we were able to open or send K through six back to campus as of right now. After this presentation, it's my understanding that technically maybe we could, but we would need a plan created, submitted, approved. Special approval for purple and then an implementation of all these things that we haven't implemented. Do I understand all that correctly?
Yes.
Do you have just an off the cuff idea of how long it would take us to? Do everything that would be required to send K through six back. To campus. How long would that take?
I think there are some big questions that we still have to answer specifically around testing and our testing frequency. And then as part of that plan writing that we have to finalize. So. The other element of that testing piece, of course, is putting those pieces into place depending on what we decide. And while we have these structures in place to have the services available. Depending on the frequency we choose, we have to put all those mechanics in place. I would expect that will take us a couple of weeks at least. So we would likely be looking in the. Mid to late March timeframe in my estimation. But certainly. It would also depend on our conversations with our partners and others in what we decide to do and how fast we can go.
But let me, let me try and address a little bit too. So let's say that we had. By the end of this week, we had full agreement on everything and everybody said, we're going to open ASAP. Which I, I got to be honest, I don't think it's going to be quite that easy. Okay, but let, let's say that played out that way. Then next week. We may have to make some modifications to our plans. That, that could be based on some agreement that we would have to make, but let's say we didn't. And on Monday, we could then submit our plans. So we would submit on the first of March. Theoretically, the state has and the county has seven days and Trent, my guess is that's. Prob, i- is it seven calendar days or seven working days? Do you know?
Uh I do not know off the top of my head.
Okay, so let's say it's seven calendar days. Then we're into the following week. So the earliest we could theoretically return would be. Eighth, ninth, tenth, somewhere there in that range. And that would be if. So that that would be the absolute best case scenario. That would only be K. Five, K six at some sites. And then the other component of that again is that would be assuming that we got agreement so that we would have the workforce necessary.
Okay. That's helpful. Alright, it's my understanding that if we. Were to return K to six to campus in the purple tier, it would take a board action. A revised agreement with S J T A and all the safety plan stuff that we just talked about. I would add a fourth item now after this conversation is the actual implementation of everything that's in the safety plan as well. Cause that's not done. Is that accurate? It would take those four things?
And Trent, work with me on this. I think the one thing that we would not absolutely have to have is board action. Because.
More about that, cause I thought.
If if we came to agreement with our with our like, and we got a new side letter of agreement. We have not had side letter of agreements approved by the board at any point in time. We could bring it to the board for action. But. We could move forward with that without formal board action. And because it would be based on a new, a a really a new agreement that we have. So when we got the side letter of agreement in. In, I think it was November and months are blurred at times. Around the previous plan of red to return to fourteen days, we did not bring that to the board for approval. So if we had hit red in in January, we would have opened without formal approval. But we we one hundred percent could bring a side letter of agreement back to the board for approval if that would be the will of the board.
Okay. Okay, I hear what you're saying. Um I have to, I'm gonna probably need a minute to just absorb and come back to a couple of those. You know, wh- what I. I don't want to stand in the way of returning to campus. I don't want there to have been. There have needed to be a board action and because we didn't take some action, we're slowing down the return. That's my. That's my paramount concern and I'll think that out a little further based on the slides and the information. They come back to it.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, Ms. Crease. And I think if we think back to what we did previously, and I don't want to, I would never want to. Like make the the community or the board think that. Oh, we're not gonna do this and that's gonna slow down the process. That's where if if we need to, then we'll bring it to the board for formal action. But when we went back to December and we got that agreement. We were planning on opening in January without any formal action from the board. Different boards have done this differently along the way. And again, that would just really be the will, will of the of the board in terms of what they would like us to do.
Okay, and you know, and honestly, that's just a whole new thought process for me. It wasn't, my thought wasn't necessarily. Our action on approving the agreement as much as the board more generally taking action to. Clear the way for more to happen. But it sounds like the board really doesn't need to do anything. Um for us to reopen, staff can or return to campus. I'm really working on it, folks. Um. Staff can just do that at any time. Well, I know that there's a whole lot of more to that in the backend with the agreements and I'm gonna get to that, but.
So Ms. Creason, what I would say is the board absolutely provides direction to myself and staff. And so if if the board felt like. We weren't taking the action or we weren't moving the action necessary, then the board could come together. And request whether it would be at the next meeting, whether it would be at a special meeting. An action item to say, we direct staff to do whatever. And so that would be, that potentially could be the will of the board. So if we for some reason worked through this week, got some agreement and the board was not satisfied with that. That that could come back to the whole board. And and you as the board could decide to take a different action or a different approach.
Okay. Okay, um I just want to state a couple of things. I'll probably have some more questions. I'm sorry, President BS, cause I wasn't planning to come back after, but. Um so just a couple of things. And I've had a lot of phone calls and a lot of email communications with a lot of people. And so some folks have heard this position and maybe some have not. But you know, I've been pretty darn consistent in saying I'm not a doctor and I am not a scientist. That is not where my skills. Lie and I really do rely on the county and state guidance to keep us safe. And that's the North Star that I have to look to. That has the expertise that I just don't have. And so, you know, I I've heard. A lot of um. Pushback on the agreement that stands now with the two weeks in the red. As I've said before, that made perfect sense. That was the guidance at the time. And we didn't see, see so many change. We didn't know we were gonna be here today, you know, um. Where my thinking shifts though a bit is, well, not really shifted, actually stays, you know, that through line is, okay, now the guidance has changed. And if we are able to return K through six to campus now, then we should do that. As I acknowledged before, this new layer of, okay, yeah, technically we can, but there's all these things that need to be in place that we don't have in place. So really, we can't. Is really new. That's that's like today new that I really need to wrap my head around, especially if we're looking. And I'm always very scared. And I know you were kind of put on the spot to. Um dream up a a date that we could maybe go back. And I'm always scared of that, because we never know what. The world's gonna throw at us. And actually, we know it's gonna be the worst, because that's just how it's been for the last year and a half. Um so I'm scared to put that out there. And then something terrible happens. But then, you know, as I'm just looking at the timing, you know, based on everything we just talked about with how long it would take to. Put everything in place and get the plans approved and do everything that needs to be done to get K through six back in campus in the purple. Will we already be five days of the red? And then we took all that momentum and energy. To do something that didn't need to be done, that probably should have been focused somewhere else. So that's something I'm gonna take a moment and just kind of think through for a second. Um, I've said this before and I'm gonna say it again too. I am really, really concerned about. The relationships between teachers and families. You know, we've heard some public comments tonight and we've heard them over the last year, you know, I. You hear some families talking horribly and you hear some um staff talking horribly and we're just. Going at it and it's not everybody, you know, it's. But it's getting really loud and the kids are hearing it. And when I hear this, I just think about, you know. Parents that um are split up and how much um better it is for the kids when you work together, even when you don't agree. Even when it's hard, um that there is that at least a respect, um even if you're not feeling it, you know, for the sake of the kids. And I'm um very, very scared about the aftermath. Of this rift that I feel that is forming, because we're not, this is not gonna be the case forever and we really do need each other. We all really need each other. The kids really need, needs, need us. Um so I just want to put that out there that I continue to be. Really concerned about the relationships. I know that I've received messages from teachers that, you know, there's this, you know, their, their, their. Their spirits are broken. I mean, it's hard to hear. I mean, you hear how we're talked to too. It's hard to hear all this stuff all the time. And it's been going on. For a while and we are only human. And I want to acknowledge it is hard to hear. You know, I know a lot of my. Sons, teachers and a lot of people are doing the best that they can. Um I've said it in the past, you know, in my day job, we talked before the pandemic, a lot about distance learning. And for higher education and what it would take and how you do it with high quality and fidelity. That's it, that's it. And this had to just be implemented by people that had no training to do this really, really fast. And doing distance learning isn't just putting your hard copy papers online and then sending them to the kids. It's not, it's so much more than that. Um so I say this just to acknowledge, you know. People are working really, really hard and parents are too. None of us are used to this. And I think that. All the mudslinging isn't getting us anywhere. And I hope that we can move, move away from that. I also want to say too, you know, I haven't really talked too much about the bargaining process, you know. We are, we have a, we have unions, we work with unions. And I do absolutely recognize, sure, we can open all day, but if we don't have a workforce, we're. Really bad shape. I also very um mindful and thankful for the positive relationship that we have with our teams. And our groups, because I know that that's not reflected everywhere. Um so I just say all that to say, you know, I have the respect there. You know, you're never gonna hear me mudslinging in this way. I really believe we're all doing the best we can. Parents, teachers, staff, families, district. I really do believe that. Now, all that said though, I do, I again, I relay, rely on the state and county guidance. And if there is a way for us to return to campuses now. We need to do that. Um again, new, a lot of new information presented tonight about, and now I just need a second to think through the timing of it all, like. Really the implementation. I don't know that I'm even have all the information to clearly understand what it would take now um to truly be able to return. In purple and then just figuring out the timing of, okay, will, will be, will we be five days of red? I, I don't know. So I need a second to think about all that. Two other questions that have come up that I don't know that need to be answered right this second, but. There's a lot of questions about, okay, well, what will it take to get out of hybrid? You know, I know that the decision to do hybrid is based on. Again, state and county guidelines, distancing rules, how many people could be in one space for so long, did I did I do that? And so there's a lot of questions. And I don't completely understand of, okay, what needs to be happened, what needs to happen so that we can return five days a week full time? What does that look like? So folks can start absorbing, you know, what that means. But I think that's it for now. I'm gonna, I'm gonna just kind of go over this slide and listen to more of the conversation and like to leave that.
You know, let let me just make two real quick comments. First, you know, I I appreciate what you said about the teachers because. You know, when I look back on my life in this district as a student. I can name every single teacher I had from kindergarten pretty much all the way through. Teachers make the biggest difference in the lives of our kids. They they really are the most important person and the biggest difference maker. And I want to acknowledge that. I I I can't tell you, and I I'm pretty sure my parents could never tell you who the heck the superintendent was when I was in the district. They couldn't tell you who the board members were either, nor could I. But those teachers make such a huge difference. I I can remember some of my principals, but the the teachers and and I hope. Like you, Ms. Creason, when we return, that that relationship and that difference is there because we're going to need that. Kids need their teachers. That's again what I'm hearing from, from my students that I meet with. Uh and so I'm really hopeful that when we're able to return, we can really foster a relationship that. That tries to work together. These have been hard times. I do appreciate the parents and I know they're going through something. That none of us have ever experienced and I hope we never do again. But I want to, uh the parents to know we value them and and I. You know, there's, there's nothing I can say that can take away their frustrations and their anger. So I'll, I'll stop on that, Ms. Fiaskes, and let you move us on.
Dr. McKibben.
Let's see, am I off mute? Yeah.
You are, we can hear you.
Wanted to make a a couple of things. One, first of all, uh wanted to say. Thanks to all of the volunteers. It looked like there was a hundred volunteers out there for for the the vaccines and so forth. And watching that happen as a community, I just brought, you know, tears frankly. One of the other things that I wanted to uh uh. Say, uh thank you is that I've been able to watch a few teachers and and actually one of the teachers that I watch. Has two hundred and forty students for university classes. And I want to tell you that those that I've watched are working twice as hard doing Zoom. And I don't know one of them. Well, I know a couple of them that want to stay on Zoom, but the rest of them wanna wanna come back. And I'll get back to that in a second. Uh I wanted to um. Ask uh in terms of. That we, we were, our classes, you talk a bit about our classes were ready. Let me use an example of, I know that we put, for example, a a a lot of new kinds of filters. And all of those kinds of things in our, our classrooms. We've gone pretty much a whole year. Do we, have we checked to make sure that those kinds of things are still okay? And, and um. Those. You say, you say our classes are ready, but have there been things that have changed? Or things that that we have to make sure that we do again before. Our students walk into those classrooms.
So Mike, Dr. McKibben, let me answer that before you kind of go to the next thing there. Um so. I I would say our custodial staff have been back um the entire time. From last year, they've, they've done in shifts at times. Um but. Mr. Kamarda actually brought their whole teams back. Uh another step I could say that we are looking at in terms of returning. We have had some administrative, site administrative, as well as office staff, working part-time at the school, part-time and still away in distance. We're requiring all of them to come back as of next week, as well as more central office staff. To really just say like a normal year, when we're getting ready to open, folks are back a couple of weeks beforehand. To make sure that by the time we open, everything is in place. Now, I know ultimately when we return in person. And I gotta be careful again with that open. And I I like to say return to in-person learning. We're gonna have hiccups. Um we talked in cabinet on Monday. About transportation. Normally, you know, for our special, our our students with special needs, we know exactly which of those students would be returning. We would be routing them weeks before. We're trying to reach out to families and be prepared. But some of those folks may have not made a decision yet. So we're making routes, we're doing all that stuff, but that's gonna be a significant challenge. That we're trying to prepare for. But until we hit that back to in-person learning, and we do have a fair amount of our, our students with special needs back in school. But we're gonna have a lot more return. That's gonna be a unique challenge we're gonna face.
Okay, I wanna uh, I know the answer to this question, but I I need to ask it to set up. We will have virtual learning available. We'll have homeschool available. We'll have in independent study available. Even as we go back to in-person learning. Is that correct?
That is correct, and it is our intent to even continue that next year. Because we have heard from folks that they may not even be ready to return next year. So we plan to have a more robust homeschool program. Our intent is to staff our schools as if every student would return, so that we make sure we're not having a staffing problem. And I'm thinking towards next year and that we use some of these one-time funds we get to make sure we can have as many. Homeschool teachers, as many independent study teachers. We may have some just straight distance learning that we provide. We still want to have all those options next year. Because contrary to what some of the people here, and I know the board sees it, we have people that email us saying, I hope you're going to allow us to continue. These programs. Right now in Folsom, Cordova, for example, they only have a little over fifty percent of their students in their elementary school that chose to return. They have fifty percent that are still full-time distance learning. So we know there are gonna be a lot of folks that are reticent to come back. We need to make sure we offer all, continue all those options this year as well as in the next year.
When, when we, when we had our hiccups before and we were trying to come back and we, we actually did a number of surveys. And things like that of teachers and of parents and that sort of thing. Are we gonna do any surveying or do we know? Approximately, or we think we know how many approximately people are gonna come back? And and uh are we gonna ask or are we just gonna kind of, oh?
I I don't, you know, I'm I'm not sure I quite under, I I don't know that a survey at this point, schools have communicated and we did this prior to winter break.
Right.
Cohorts you were in. So those cohorts were already developed. And any folks that they did not get responses from, they were communicating with. So that's really at a school site level, because it may look very different at one school to the next school in terms of the number of folks that choose to return.
And my question is, have the schools kind of kept up with that? Or or are we counting on that? Survey that we did before winter break to pretty much be where we're gonna be when we get back. Hopefully in the dates that you suggest.
Well, what I would say, Dr. McKibben, is I'm not sure that the the models that we chose shouldn't matter whether fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty, ninety percent return. They'll work in those models. So you may have, and we really wanted to, and that was, I know there are a lot of people that think we should have done another model. And if they, if I could have an hour with them and explain how there may be ten to fifteen thousand students who we'd have to change teachers. Um at this time of the year and 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 teaching options, which would have been really chaotic for the whole system. But to to be able to have kids that may not start the year and feel comfortable. Let's say if we were to return the week before spring break, but maybe a month later they are, we're hopeful that those kids then can come back into. Into a seat-based program.
Okay. Next, next one. In terms of, one of the things that we know from a lot of literature and a lot of what people are telling us is that we're going to have to deal with some fairly heavy-duty mental health kinds of things. Do we have as part of our return plan extended activities related to dealing with these students as they come back and some of, some of the kinds of social emotional things that we know are going to happen?
So I'm going to, I'm going to tell you, in two weeks, we have an entire agenda item on social emotional wellness. So we were, we will speak in great detail around that in, in, at our next board meeting.
Okay, and then my last one is a bit of the E R in me. And, and that is what would cause us to have to pause our return and go back to full virtual experience and and, because I know that some districts around us have, have had that to do when they went back and so forth. Do we have a contingency for that?
Well, what I would say to you is, the, the one district that I know of that had to do some significant shutdowns was not really following the guidance. They were, they weren't following the spacing. They were trying to, you know, force all kids come back, and they've seen significant outbreaks. When, when I speak with, you know, other superintendents, and they followed the appropriate safety protocols, they are having outbreaks. There are times where I have a, a member on cabinet who has a spouse who's a teacher in another district and had kids in their, her class that tested positive. She had to be out for a number of days. The challenge there is then the teacher's out, so how are you providing instruction to the students? So we'll have situations like that when we return. It's just, we need to make sure we have all of the supports in place for when those do, that we're able to address them. Trent could probably speak to if there was a more of a significant outbreak, break, what we would have to do.
So the, the latest guidance does have a specific piece in it that states that we would have to go back to distance learning district-wide if it is 25% or more of our schools have to be closed. And there's specific guidance a lot when you have to close a school, so it depends on how many of your single groups of kids you have to move into quarantine in a period of time. So there's specifics in there about when you would close a school in coordination with your county health officials. And then when you would hit that level that you've closed so many schools in the district that you need to consider that district closure. But that would be done in coordination with county health, so they have put some metrics around that.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dr. McKibben. I'll just close with a, a few questions and notes, and actually, we're not going to close, we're going to go to a public comment, and then we're going to circle back at the request of my colleagues. But I, I know that there was just a lot of conversation about plans and current plans and revised plans and previous plans, and so I'm just going to take a quick opportunity to share my understanding and then just see if staff can confirm that that understanding is accurate, which is in the fall. We, as we have been contemplating opening, which we've been doing for quite some time, we had, of course, the July guidance from public health that had a variety of requirements, but for the most part, those requirements were surrounded and focused on kind of system improvements, air filtration improvement, et cetera, but broader things that we could do at the district and protocols that apply per site. But really were district protocols without the site-by-site requirement. And again, the plan applied to every site, but was not specific to the layout of every single individual site. And then what happened in through the fall, both through Cal OSHA regulations and emergency temporary standards that were released in November that applied to almost, were drafted for places of employment, which doesn't always accommodate places of education. There was some additional requirements there that were on a site-by-site level. So where we ended up with, it's not that we didn't have quote-unquote a plan. It was just a little bit more general than what the then shifting guidance required from the state from both Cal OSHA and the Department of Public Health. And so that's all to say, the plan as a whole kind of needed some revisions to be site-specific. And that's regardless of what tier, regardless of kind of instructional model, those changes were going to need to happen no matter what. And then, of course, now you lay on kind of the, the tier distinctions. So then there's different levels that we kind of have to prepare for. But it is all modification of original plans to keep up with the guidance that we are currently being dealt. Is that accurate?
Yes, it is.
And I want to also just emphasize that it is a big lift. Like, I'm not going to dismiss the amount of work that goes into keeping up with the new pieces, but Mr. Allen, you pointed out in your presentation on slide 11, kind of highlighting the key changes, right? There have been a couple of themes and requirements, I think, in any stage of the guidance, but there are three in particular that I highlighted in red that are some of the more kind of bigger lifts, because there are more important mitigation strategies, and that's around the stable group structures, the physical distancing, and the testing of staff and students. And the reason those pieces are absolutely critical is because again, as was pointed out, those are all critical in any tier level and really do support and build kind of a foundation such that once we do open, it is safe and we have the standard and the mitigation me- measures in place to really exist in any tier level, right? We will be able to shift because you'll be able to manage the community health. And so definitely frustrating, definitely a lot of work, but that's kind of how, what the evolution has been thus far. And so again, I don't want to dismiss and say, it's not that much work. We're just focused on stable group structures, physical distancing and testing, because those are three pretty big components. But when and if we, we get those right, whether it's in red or whether it's in purple, they will serve to keep everybody on a school site safe. I hope that helps. Lay it out just a, a little bit, and I, you know, I think my understanding is more or less correct, but I think I'll move from what's built in here, and I'm excited to see the testing part up and running. Looking forward to, to seeing that part launched. But I think outside of that, I also just want to appreciate that all the conversations that we're having in terms of coming back to the table in terms of really bolstering and improving the plans are all being done within the conversations of opening in red, because I think what was also pointed out that is key to call out is even if we submitted a CSP, a COVID safety plan in purple with the higher thresholds of requirements included in there, there's still a consultation component required for us to consult both communities, parents, but also our labor partners. So for a number of different reasons, I am supportive of continuing to move and make progress within the existing agreements, which allow for flexibility and changing guidances, which is where we're at in terms of the five, changing of the five days. And a little bit more conversation on kind of what happens if we stall out, right? I think we're all increasingly hopeful in terms of where we are trending. But I know where I get concerned, particularly when you look at maps that I don't know if I invite my colleagues and really anybody to go and look at kind of the 1918 Spanish flu maps, and then this map, and you can almost see like a direct correlation with our, with our existing case rates and mortality rates, and it's kind of crazy when you think like history repeating itself, but there's the first bump, which we saw in the spring, that a really significant bump, which we saw in the fall, and then another bump. Now, of course, we're living in this incredible time where we've been able to distribute a vaccine that was just presented to the world three months ago. And when I think about that and step back for a moment and think about the moment in time that we're living and the fact that that was possible, that the vaccine that was announced in November is in the arms of our community members today, that's pretty incredible. So all of that goes to say, I am superbly hopeful, as is everybody, that we'll continue to trend in the right direction. I'm supportive of conversations and, you know, in case we tear out, but I want to kind of emphasize that once we do get open, these mitigation measures will allow us to exist in any tier and really will be beneficial for all. So I think there's just a lot of incentives. And there's just a lot of upsides to continuing to work closely with our labor partners, make sure that our teachers and certificated staff feel safe. Coming back to the classroom, you know, I know learning is still happening, but coming back to the classroom so that once we do open, we don't have this add-in flow, this back and forth, this really disruptive piece to our families, we can kind of maintain a little bit of structure and just consistency through the end of the year, and then ideally, and I know very hopefully, I think, as Mr. Kern noted, we are staffing and all prepared for a full opening in the fall. So I hope that that was at least a little bit coherent. If not, I apologize, but those are some of my thoughts. I will, do want to turn it to public comment. And then we will circle back for another round of comments from my colleagues. So I'm going to turn it back over to you, Mr. Allen, to help us navigate through public comment.
We do have several individuals who are ready to offer comment. Our first will be Anne Marie Madine, when you are ready.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, I'd just like to say thank you for lots of great information. Clearly, a lot of work has gone into this. So appreciate learning where things stand. And I, I was trying to do some research on the district webpage and wasn't able to find a lot of this information. I think part of the frustration that parents are experiencing that you are seeing is this absence of information that is getting out to the parents. I get phone calls all the time about the community engagement program, which is not relevant to me. Tell me more about what's going on with this. Give me more of those phone calls and the email blasts that you do. Share this information that you just gave us tonight. I also want to comment that you guys say that you're following the county guidelines, and I think a lot of the parents are frustrated because we see that our neighbor Gavin Newsom is able to send his kids to campus. And he has to follow the same county guidelines on that campus. So it comes across like maybe it's really boiling down to an issue between labor and management, which ends up creating this feedback loop here, which is why the parents and teachers are exhibiting this frustration. So I'm just sharing those thoughts that I wish that every teacher that I talk to tells me they can't wait to get back onto campus. So as a parent, I'm just really confused about why it's taking so long, particularly when my neighbor can send his to camp, his kids to campus and I can't. That's it, I'm done. Thank you.
And thank you for your comment. Our next comment will be from Ben Abey. Go ahead, sir.
Madam President, Board Members.
Mr. Abey, I don't know, maybe it's just me, but I can't hear you.
Okay, Madam President, Board Members. Thank you for hearing me again. I apologize for kind of losing my earlier, but to be honest, Mr. Simmons' comments and his lack of awareness, what parents and families are going through was pretty infuriating. I get that he's a lobbyist and he has clients, but it was just frustrating. As parents, day by day, kids are falling farther and farther behind. They're, they're failing, they're breaking. I can show you the data. You've seen the data. You know what's going on. But as parents, we, we can't ignore their cries for help. We can't tell them that their success wasn't included in a collective bargaining agreement. We can't tell them that their happiness must be agreed to by union negotiators. For us, this isn't theoretical. It's every day of our lives staring into their eyes and seeing what they're going through. That's what's coming through. I know this is hard and there are no good options before you. And I also appreciate the effort that you guys are putting into this. I know it's hard. I know you're having to pivot every 30 seconds. But quite honestly, we're at the point where effort alone just isn't going to get it done. We have to see results. We have to see action. Things have to move. There's always going to be an excuse to wait. We can't wait. We have to move. Don't ignore our cries. Let our kids learn. End the lockout. Open schools so parents and students have a choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next comment will be from S A. You may begin.
I, I think that might be me. I'm so sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just, as a parent and as an educator in our district, I just want to say thank you to the union and to the board and Superintendent Kern for not rushing in to getting us back to school. Teachers want nothing more than to get back to school, but not at the detriment of the potential of us having to return to distance learning or the teachers ending up ill and out of the classroom, which would cause other issues than what we already have. I see my administrator and the teachers that I work with, as well as the teachers that educate my children, working so hard in day in and day out alongside the board and the union, and it is disheartening to hear other parents throw the union and the district under the bus, as well as us teachers. We want to be in the classroom, but we also want what is best for our community as a whole. And rushing into things would never have worked out well. So thank you for taking so much flack and so much criticism from the community and the masses for putting all of our interests and best interests at heart. You are appreciated, and for all of you parents out there doubting what is happening, this is for the best of the kids and our community, and it is really sad to hear you publicly berate all of us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Now this commenter will be S A. You may begin.
Hi, I appreciate the opportunity to make a quick comment here. That was a ton of information in my head. It's quite spinning. A lot of that was new. I wish that you had been that transparent before. For the teacher who just called in, I would expect no less than a teacher to fully defend the school board and to fully defend staying closed. Your union rep spoke earlier, and I think he made it very clear. We had a couple of members who also spoke about that, and Ms. Costa mentioned the union negotiations, so I'm just going to leave that right there. We all expect you all to call in and defend the board. That said, I see every one of you board members. I do. I know that you are trying to do what's best. The problem is, is there's been a lack of transparency. You've pulled the rug out from under us a couple of times with these comments. I've made comments at school boards stating that you're just making promises and pulling the rug out from under us. I sincerely hope this is not an additional time when it's just going to roll around to a couple of weeks and the union's going to step in, teachers are going to step in, yada, yada, and the rug is going to be pulled out from under us again. You sound more sincere this time. You sound like maybe you do actually have a plan, and I'm sorry, but you didn't really have a plan, because that's what you said at the school board meeting, said it wasn't ready to go. You spent millions cleaning classrooms. Your custodial staff is back in full-time. The teachers all got a bonus for doing distance learning. I'm not sure whether or not they're getting another one, scuttlebutt as they are. So I hope that we can pull it together, but if you don't want animosity between parents and teachers, let's all work together instead of berating parents who are upset. let's all work together instead of berating parents who are upset on here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Our next commenter will be Lanny Williams.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
We can hear you. We can hear you, Lanny.
Okay, thank you. I just have a couple of comments and you know, first of all, I would just thank everybody because I do know that this is a very, you know, something that we never expected in a million years. But there's a couple of questions that I have and that is, you know, I hear a lot of words like voluntary, the testing, it's not mandatory, suggested, blah, 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 blah. And my concern is, so you know, you're asking the parents to be comfortable with sending the kids back to school, but yet the testing is not mandatory. So what's to say that, you know, kids aren't being sent to school sick because the parents are, you know, for whatever reason, sending their kids to school sick because they've done it before. It's, you know, not nothing new. And then we have other, you know, teachers, other kids, kids bringing it home to their parents, sick and you know, personally, I have two special needs kids and they are not going to keep their hands out of their nose or distance from other people. Who's going to police that? Who's going to make sure that the kids keep their masks up above? You go up to stores and there are people who are not wearing masks. So that's where my concern is, but I also want to quickly say I do appreciate every one of the staff who have worked so very hard. And this has been very frustrating as a parent, grandparent to do this. But I know it's equally and the teachers are just as important to me as my family's health as well. And I think that we need to consider them and stop berating them and stop treating them the way that we have them. It's been very disheartening. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Erin Bass. You may begin.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
I speak to you tonight on behalf of my three children and the more than 50,500 other children in the San Juan Unified School System. I beg you for the health and wellbeing of our children to reopen schools as soon as possible. I am disheartened that the school has been closed for nearly a year and you are only just finishing up a COVID safety plan. Additionally, it was a huge disappointment when Sacramento was in the red tier last fall and San Juan put off reopening until January, which as we know, never ended up happening. I am baffled by the fact that schools that did reopen when possible now have the freedom to open or close seemingly at will regardless of tier color. So had we opened last fall, we wouldn't be going through this right now. I feel hopeful that the board and teachers are back at the bargaining table. And I implore you to remove the unnecessary two week requirement in the red tier before reopening. Did you know that over 35 elementary, 15 middle schools and 10 high school age private schools are open inside the San Juan Unified School District boundaries? If private schools can open safely on their limited budgets, then there is no reason why we can't also reopen safely. A year ago, my three children were healthy, happy and doing well in school. Today, after nearly a year of distance learning, they find it hard to concentrate. They struggle to finish their work and they display signs of depression. Just yesterday, one of my kids broke down in tears and said, I have nothing to live for. As a parent, do you know how that feels? Every day that schools stay closed is another day that children in this district suffer unnecessarily. I am grateful to the teachers that I know are working so hard, but distance learning does not work. We do not know to what extent our children have been damaged by school shutdowns, but we do know that every day a child is back in school is another opportunity to undo some of that damage and to get our kids back on track. As members of our school board, it is your moral obligation to fight for what is best for our children. At this moment, there is simply not enough evidence of risk to warrant the excessive caution being employed by this board and the teachers' union. Please do the right thing. Reopen schools.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Greg Russell. You may begin.
Good evenings. Superintendent Kern and board members, thank you for having me. I would like to start by telling you how disappointed I am with the district and the union. San Juan used to be the crown jewel of Sacramento and now we're being mocked and laughed at by other districts. I was shocked to hear the district put out a statement on the news today saying that current state guidance has prevented us from offering a return until very recently from arcade through six. This is not true. Under state guidelines, we could have opened in the fall and then reopened again when the state opened back up early last month. Unfortunately, just like the fall, the district was not ready on January 14th when the new state and county guidelines came out. How can almost every other district around us be open? How can every private school be open? Honestly, I do not care if it's the board, the district or the unions holding us up, but enough is enough. San Juan should have applied for waiver in the fall and should have been ready with the state's plan approved in place when we were given a go on January 14th. Today I sat with my many families angry, tired and broken. The reason these families are sitting on the sidewalks instead of the classroom falls only on you. You can no longer blame this on the government guidelines. This is not right. I would also like to talk about the hybrid plan. This is along with a full, this along the full distance learning is outdated and based on old models, not current facts. This is this was imposed on the, by the, on the teachers by the district in the side letter agreement and needs to be reevaluated. When we go back, we need our kids back five days a week. If you need to learn how to achieve this, I'm sure that one of our neighboring districts, including Roseville, will be happy to share their plans that they have been using with you. Unfortunately, when the survey was sent out to the teachers today, it lacked any question about this. The last time the teachers were asked about this was in November. I also heard Bill Simmons talk about working day and night. I am glad to hear this because our district is so far behind that this is what it's going to take to get schools back. One last thought, why? Why can my nephew sit on Zoom all day long and then go to work in the evening at local grocery stores and bag the groceries for those same teachers he cannot be in class with? No occupant, other occupation has had a choice about getting back to work and neither should the teachers' union. They are essential as all.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Shelley Melgoza. You may begin.
Yes, hi. Thank you so much for your time. I am a teacher, a veteran teacher of 24 years, 22 being in the San Juan Unified School District. 19 of those years spent at the high school level and five now at the middle school level. So you could guess my concerns about safely coming back to on campus due to the amount of students on campus and the transition. I have talked to several colleagues at different sites and they feel like that their classrooms are not prepared or ready to go. They don't have sinks in their classroom for washing of hands, which has been repeatedly talked about. Nor do they have working sinks if their sinks are in their classroom. Also, I'm a PE teacher, so I'm concerned about having hand washing stations outside during PE. Just want you guys to clarify to make sure that all classrooms are ready for hand sanitizing and also outdoor classrooms. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Ua Ferry. You may begin.
Thank you very much Superintendent Kern and the board. This is actually Ken Furl, not Eva Furl. I'm not allowed to have my own PC, so I have to use hers. So thank you very much. I'd just like to thank Trent Allen, first of all, for a really clear presentation. Really appreciated that. And just say a couple of words. In the last week, the United States Congress published a document about what's next for schools. And I'd just like to read something from that real quickly. It says here that, you know, we're worried about safety if we go back and making sure people don't get sick. But it says this, as policymakers contemplate reopening schools, it's important that they balance the often ignored cost of continued school closures with the critical health risks of school reopenings. And I don't think we do a good job of balancing the risks on both sides. We just look at the negative of reopening and we don't measure the negatives of being closed. In some ways, we've lost the actual focus of why we have public schools, only to educate kids, not to make teachers feel good, not to make parents feel good, not for safety sake, but to educate kids. So let's get back to doing that. And I think you guys are on the right track. So thank you. Finally, I'd just like to leave it with this. The Marin Public School District has over 90% of their students back in school since September. And that had to do with two out of three teachers being willing to go back and teach in person that made that happen. There's been no additional community spread. In fact, it's gone down because being in school helps reduce those activities that spread it. So thank you very much. I think you're on the right track. Appreciate the time.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Shelley Melgoza. You may begin.
Shelley, I already spoke. I'm sorry. I apologize if I forgot to lower my hand.
Thank you. Our next speaker then will be Kristin Sorobi. I'm sorry, I put up a Zach Erickson. You may begin.
All right. My name is Zach Erickson. Thank you for your time and the presentations tonight. I would like to give, take this opportunity to give you guys a pep talk. I mean, that presentation by Trent and Superintendent Kern sounds like it's ready. I don't think there's any need for any more delays. I think that the few remaining items can be worked on concurrently while you're doing in the various review periods. I think it's time now to move forward. I think that all of this, as someone else said very well, the excessive caution is unfounded now. You know, people think about, keep talking about these, the unsafety, the second, another wave. But the fact is the vaccine, the vaccine is taking a hold. It is, it is making a mark. We, we have between the cases that have already happened in the state of California and the vaccines given, we have 23% of the population is not eligible to get the, get effects of COVID moving forward. That's almost a quarter of us. One out of four will not have effects of this disease going forward. This is something that we need to talk about. We're not, we don't need to worry about all of these plans or backtracking or all these things. The time to open schools is now. There are serious effects happening to our children. Serious negative effects happening to the future generation of our population. And we need to open the schools now. Thank you.
Thank you. Now it will be Kristin Sorobi. You may begin.
My name is Kristin Sorabji and I have two children at Del Deo Elementary School in Carmichael. One is in kindergarten or a kindergartner and the other is in fifth grade. And I just wanted to start off by saying how disheartening it was to hear Superintendent Kern mention students being at the high school farm, watching the pigs be born. Well, my kindergartner can't even walk into a classroom for two and a half hours, two days a week. That's just sad to me. It's sad to me that there are now high school students going out and playing sports. But my kindergartner, who has been in distance learning for a year because he was at the TK at Del Deo as well, cannot even walk into the classroom. I also find, I just wanted to address Mr. Simmons about the special education teachers. As someone who works very closely with the San Juan Unified Special Education Department, I want to say that a large majority of the teachers teaching special ed right now are substitute teachers. So if teachers don't want to come back to the classroom for our general education population, then I would be happy to send my child to school with a substitute teacher because he doesn't have a relationship with his teacher. He doesn't even have a relationship with any one of the students in his class seat right now. So if I need a substitute teacher, I know that myself and hundreds, if not thousands of other parents would be happy to send our kids back to substitute teachers. And for the teacher that said that, you know, you're taking your, you know, you take as long as you need. It's been a year and San Juan is still revising a plan. It's always, oh, it's, we're in the works. It's in the works. It's time to be done and it's time to get back. And it may be a lot of work, but the sooner you get our kids into school, the less mental health issues, the less social and emotional issues our kids are going to have. And that at the end of the day is what it's important, not your union, not anything else, but getting our kids back into the classroom.
Thank you for your comment. We now have Carrie Weiner. You may begin.
I think all the parents listening right now and teachers included are very disheartened to hear that. You know, I think honestly, all of us were waiting to hear today that you're saying we're opening up. And it's very disheartening to hear with all this planning and you guys not seeking waivers, you've been dragging your feet. And we would love to not have these conversations and we would love to not be sitting here tonight and say, hey, can you just open up? I don't know how many parents and teachers need to tell you guys. It's time to get in gear and it's really disheartening to hear that you are holding off on the purple tier because it's extra work. Are our kids not worth it to you guys? And it's also really heartening to not hear that you're talking about what's the plan in negotiations? What's going on right now? Because going back two days a week or two and a half hours is unacceptable at this point. It's unacceptable when we can put our kids in a private school down the street and they can go every day or go to Folsom, Cordova or Roseville. We've asked you for the last eight months to listen to us and you've chose repeatedly to not listen to us. So at what point are you going to show us that you are for the parents, for the teachers and for the kids? I would love to hear that answer.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Mia Morris. You may begin.
Yeah, this is her dad Dexter. And I have two kids, one in 10th grade and one in eighth grade. And I asked my eighth grader recently, why would you want to go back to school in person? He said, well, so I could be productive, be part of the community. And he misses his friends. And I think he's not alone in that. Now I've heard a lot about other schools, districts here are have in-person learning. And in fact, where my sister teaches outside of Atlanta in kindergarten, she's a kindergarten teacher there for the entire school year. She's had 19 to 23 kids every day in class. And I'm just thinking to myself, if it's good enough for Georgia, why isn't it good enough for the great state of California? And I think that it became apparent when the union representative got on the call. Seems like he controls us going back to school because he controls the teachers. I find that pretty poignant when he said, you know, if the school board meeting, if you can have a meeting where you're six feet apart and in person instead of on Zoom, that probably show him something. So maybe the next board meeting you do that, have it in person, six feet apart and not Zoom. I think that it's time to get our kids back in school and get them productive and being part of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Sabrina Bernardo. You may begin. Miss Bernardo. Miss Bernardo, it looks like you are not on mute, but we still cannot hear you. Okay, I will put her back in the queue and move to our next speaker, Tracy F. Tracy, you may begin.
Thank you. Wow, that was quicker than I thought. Okay, so I just want to really speak to high school sports. I want to thank the board for allowing high school sports to open up. And I just want to say that I strongly disagree with any teacher or any parent out there that is saying that high school sports are less essential than academics. You know, I have two high school athletes. And them being able to get back to some kind of conditioning has. Helped their mental state significantly. It's giving them more focus. It's making them want to do better in school so they can make the team. It's incredibly helpful. And for anybody that's. Not seeing that, I need you to hear me because these teammates need the socialization. They need the physical activity. And this gives them an outlet that's outdoors. It's not in a classroom. And I'm just passionate about that. And I just really want teachers and parents that oppose this. To understand the benefits that this offers all of these children and these athletes. My children are actually excited again. You know, they've been stuck in distance learning without any youth sports for a year. And it's a big deal for them in their lives. And, you know, I just really would like people to have. A better understanding of the importance of that. It helps them learn. It helps them have another influence in their life, other than their mom and their dad, helping them navigate life in these late. You know. Youth adolescent years. So thank you. I appreciate the board, you know, allowing that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kelsey Dixon, Kessley Dixon.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you. All right. So I am coming to you on behalf of all teachers in this district who want to return to in-person learning. We have heard on here a lot from the teachers who do not want to return, but I can promise you, there are plenty of us who do want to return. I have heard numerous times tonight that pre-K through six can return to in-person. So Superintendent Kern, why are we not getting these grades back in person now? Science no longer justifies our schools continuing to be solely virtual. Let's get this moving and get back into the classroom tomorrow. I have lost too many students to neighboring districts that are able to be open. I do not need two weeks or even five days to prepare. Get us back in person now. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Sabrina Bernardo. I'm sorry, I put David K up. David K. And I want to put him back into the queue. Ms. Bernardo. You may begin.
Ms. Bernardo, you're on mute. You're now off mute, but we still can't hear you.
We're continuing to have technical difficulties with Ms. Bernardo, so I will. Move her back into the queue and we'll move to Caroline Castaneda.
Good evening, board members and staff. I am the parent of two high schoolers. And I just want to take the time to thank you for your commitment to implementing a plan that keeps our students, teachers, staff, and community. As safe as possible and for offering families like mine with lower risk thresholds, a choice for our students too. I recognize the tireless hours you and your staff and our teachers have put in over this past year, and I thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Truman Stockit.
Actually, it's Amy Stockit because he's not in here, but it's a cute picture of him. I just wanted to thank all the teachers and staff for working hard to try and get us back to learning and. In person, and I strongly support that. And I also just want to. Make it public knowledge and be forthright that. If we can open now that I really support our board to push that and put that. As an action item or whatever you have to do, even if it goes against what the union thinks, I think it's. Important and I think it's safe and I think it follows science and I think we should do it and. Am also thankful for the district to allow. It looked like vaccinations were done at Del Campo, but I couldn't tell from all the pictures that they're able to do that to give people some more peace of mind. And I appreciate all the hard work and I really think it can be. Moved forward more quickly for us to return in person. And I want to add to Tracy's words about. How grateful I am for sports and that I have my two high schoolers back in it, not my other ones yet, but. That the light has come back on a little bit more motivation for school. And I appreciate that the district is open. To following those guidelines and allowing them to, to play because it does help their mental state. And I appreciate them being able to socialize that way too. So thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Krista Green. Krista, you may begin.
Thank you. I just want to acknowledge our classified staff. I feel like. Our classified staff has worked tirelessly through this entire year. And without any acknowledgement. And I'm very proud of them as I am a classified staff. We continually reach out to students. Staff, families, everybody. And. Unfortunately, we don't have the union backing that teachers do. And so you keep hearing about the union backing of teachers, but yet we're forced to go to school. And be on campus on Monday morning. I'm not comfortable with that, but we have to do this because we're forced to. And. I would really like for the district to acknowledge the fact that our classified staff have been on campus, yet. Give us our second dose of the COVID test before we have to go back. I don't know. That's just my face. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a call in from a guest with the numbers one, seven, zero, seven, and the last three, four, one, seven. You may begin.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I so apologize. This is Sabrina Bernardo. I've been trying to get on.
Oh, great.
I don't know what's going on. So I really apologize. I know how to use technology, I swear. But as we all know, it doesn't always work when we want it to. So I appreciate all of the updates, Trent Allen, you did terrific. I really appreciate it. You are very kind in your words and you really get the point across. So I do appreciate that. I do want to refer to the so when slide that you did have up on the ongoing conversation. It states. In the bullet point, K six should return if progress towards red tier stalls. That's the ongoing conversations. And I really hope that you guys are putting a date on that. So not just, okay, how long are we gonna wait to actually then start talking about that? Can you guys, when you talk, I'm really asking, put a date on it. If it's not back by, I don't know, three weeks, if we're not in red tier, like. Open no matter what, put a date on it, a solid date to come back. When we're in the ongoing conversations, can you guys please put a date on when we're going back to more than two? Two days for two hours. These kids have been back no time at all. So the two hours that they're gonna get when they eventually go back is absolutely nothing. I get it. Let's get them back. Let's do a month of that, get them. Comfortable. But then can we look to a little bit more than that? I would just really appreciate you guys looking into it. So with that, I'm glad you guys are moving forward and I hope you guys move quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, President Viascas. That is our final hand raised for this item.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reed. I'm gonna turn it now back to my colleagues. As soon as we are able. Perfect. Thank you very much, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you. I appreciate all the comments. That have been spoken, the emails that we received. And I'll make my comment now and it will be short because. But I just want to go on record again saying that I feel that we need to do everything that we can possibly can. To get our children's to return in-person learning as soon as possible. I, I, I feel that even if that means getting our K through six. In whatever color as soon as possible, I think we should be trying to get there. And these comments are not a comment against any. Union or teachers or staff. It is, it is a call that we work together to get our kids back in person as soon as possible. And because in the reality is, it's true, other districts around us are, are back in in-person learning. And you know, purple and red doesn't really mean anything to these parents or students because they're in the classroom. And so I, I'm calling. And I will be happy to give direction if my colleagues will allow me to give direction to our superintendent to continue. To negotiate however and whatever it takes to get us back as soon as possible. And so I will be happy to hear my colleagues on that. And I appreciate that very, very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Ms. Costa.
Thank you. I think the words working together are what is most important right now. And. I too have heard the comments from parents and students. Comments on both sides. Parents who say, even if you go back, I don't want my child to go back. Parents who say my child is suffering and needs to go back. I think in the long run, it is going to be critically important when we do get back. That we are working together. The relationships that children have with their teachers. Are really so important. And being able to come back and to have that relationship again. Without having people. Transmit to children that. Teachers are bad. I think it's going to be important. I would like to agree with something that one of the speakers said tonight about. How hard people are working and it's not just teachers who are working hard. It's our administrators who are working hard. It's our classified employees who are working hard. The people in nutrition services, the people in custodial services, the people in technology services everywhere across the district. People have given their all. I know as I called and congratulated people who were retiring. Every one of those teachers said to me, this was the hardest year of my career. I have given everything and it still isn't the same as being in the classroom. So I don't think there is anyone. Who doesn't want to go back. I think we have been trying to follow science and we continue to do that. In terms of giving direction to the superintendent, I think the superintendent has our direction and that's to continue to negotiate. And to resolve this as quickly as possible so that we can safely have children back in school. So. And to parents who email and say, I know you won't read this. I just want to say. I don't think there's a board member who hasn't read every single email that has come to us. It's important. What you have to say is important and it's not that we're not listening to you. We're trying to find solutions for your kids. So thank you.
Ms. Creason.
Thank you. I wanted to just a couple of things I heard during public comment and then I had some time to absorb and think. I'll go back to. The other thoughts from the slideshow and the presentation. So there was a public comment that talked about. Some concerns about there being suggestions for safety that aren't necessarily requirements for safety and some concerns of what that can mean when we actually are back on campus. And I just want to share, it's something I've thought a lot about too. It's okay, once we get through this and we're back on campus. What are we gonna do to make sure we're not closing down every two weeks because somebody got sick? You know, because that, I mean, the virus is still gonna be around. So what are we gonna do? Because I mean, think about that, just the back and forth with kids going back to distance learning, back to campus and what that looks like. So I just want to share that that's a concern I have too. I know that is something that staff and folks are looking at. I had conversations with the superintendent about Stephen, the. It's late, some of my words aren't working right, but you know, screening, I wouldn't say surveying, but home screening. You know, there's some folks that don't have a thermometer, don't maybe know all of the signs and symptoms that they should be looking for. I know I had talked to him about possibly providing families that don't have a thermometer with a thermometer. I know that's only one indicator and not everyone will have a. Temperature, but that is one thing that we could check, right? So that's just one example of a conversation that's happening of what can we do to give folks the tools to be as safe as possible. You know, so that we're not having sick kids or sick adults, sick people on campus and shutting down all the time. So I just want to acknowledge that. I heard a couple of people say, well. You said, we're just now finishing the COVID plan. So it was just, it's my understanding, we've had plans that have been completed and if guidance didn't change. They would have been in compliance, but because the guidance continues to change, the plans continue to change. It's not that. There's never been a completed plan that was in compliance. Do I understand that correctly? That's, I guess, to Trent.
That is correct. And if you go to San Juan.edu/SaferTurn, then existing draft of, or the existing plan is there. That will be changing. Very soon, but the existing plan is there. That's that district-wide safety plan. So that gives you an idea of that overarching plan that has been there. And has been our guiding document for some time.
Thank you. Because I know it's a question that came up for me from our last board meeting when we were talking about, well, what do we need to do to get there? And then the. You know, safety plans came up and I just knew a lot has happened in the last several months, but I knew that this came before the board at some point. So I appreciate just the additional clarification. I just want to backtrack something I said earlier. I don't, I meant what I said about, you know, I do have concerns about the relationships, but I also want to acknowledge. There's a lot of people that are rowing the boat together and doing the best that they can. And so I don't at all intend to imply that there's this huge rift. District ride with every parent and every family and every teacher. That's not, or staffers. That's not what I meant at all. We, we hear a lot from all kinds of corners of our district and, you know, I do applaud, you know, folks that are, we're all doing the best that we can. So yeah, I'll leave it at that. This is where it's gonna get a little heavy. Do I understand correctly that by the time it would take for us to implement. Everything it would require us. To implement to return K through six to campus. In purple, we will likely be in the red. Is that the kind of the projection or feeling of staff?
That's really hard to say. I mean, I, I, I wish I could say, yeah. But it, it, we could, you know, I was really, like I mentioned earlier, I was really disappointed to see us take a small step backwards today. We're watching those numbers every day. So I, Ms. Creason, I really can't say that. And, and I think that's why. We said earlier, along with focusing on moving that red tier with the fourteen days to five. Even if that's later on for secondary, that would be a benefit as well as. The focus on. At some point, returning our elementary school students to back to campus, even if we're continue to stay in the purple tier.
Okay. And so, and so I appreciate you saying that. And I think that that's where my direction, like pointing to what. Mr. Hernandez was getting at with direction from the board. And I'm gonna try to articulate this well is. We need a date, you know, it can't continue, we can't be nebulous anymore. I hear what you're saying. I mean, I'm, I'm very appreciative of the. The desire to put in some kind of stopgap. So we can't just live in the purple forever and never go anywhere. So I do appreciate that, but I think we need a date with that. So I think that would be my direction to the board or to the board, the super, I'm very tired. The superintendent is, you know. I mean, I'm loving this idea that we can get back on campus. Everybody hopefully by the end of the month or before, well, be in the next month before spring break. And I know none of us have a crystal ball and we can't. And I know none of us have a crystal ball and we can't predict what will come. But my concern is, you know, the fact still remains that under current guidance with the approved plan and the implementation of that plan, we could bring K to six back. And I understand there's a workforce issue and I respect the bargaining process and that's happening, but I'm not talking about that right now. I'm just talking about just the logistics of this part, right? I don't want us to have to come back and have that discussion again, right? You know, what if we do stall out? And it is this way, you know, stalled at the end of the month. I don't want us to be having this conversation again. It's giving more time doing new implementations for purple so that now we're looking at after spring break. So what I'm trying to get at is I just want to promote this as much as humanly possible. If by the end of the month, and again, I understand I want to put a date on it, but you know, by the end of the month, either we can get there in red or we are at least prepared. The district has done everything we can, again, bargaining aside, so that we can roll in a stalled purple if that's what we need to do. I know that was not very articulate, but I'm hoping that the message got across.
I hear you. And I think I've heard that message from others, and that's also a message that we have communicated. We communicated on Monday and it'll be part of our discussions going forward.
Okay. Because I mean, I think that, I mean, I know it's not today, you know, it's not open or going back to campus today, but I think that having that date will help a lot. And I hear, I mean, I understand the feeling of the rug being pulled out. It wasn't intentional. We all thought we were gonna, had hoped we would go back. Definitely not intentional, but I would hate for that to happen again, you know, outside of our control again. So I'm mindful of that as well. I came to this board meeting completely ready to ask for an emergency meeting to take a board action. Because when I came into this meeting, I had thought that what it would take is three things, a board action, new agreement with a JTA, and approval of new safety plans. Based on everything I'm hearing, there is no real action for the board to take. And I'm not here to just put on a show, you know, I wouldn't request something that really has no substance for me. I wanted to do that because I don't want to block progress, you know, and I want us to do our part as we work on the other things that we need to work on. So for, if, so please, I'm saying all this, so if I'm incorrect anyway, someone please correct me because I won't ask for a board action or an emergency meeting because there really is no purpose for one for us to go back to campus in a stalled purple or in red. It can just happen. Am I incorrect with all that?
No, you're correct.
Okay. Okay. So a couple of our things. Can staff assure the community? I think that the answer to this is yes, like the school sites are ready to roll and receive kids based on past guidance, but that did include hand sanitizing stations, working ways to wash up all that fun stuff. That's all done and taken care of, right?
Yeah. And you know what I'll do? One of the things that we, I mean, Frank has presented multiple times and shared everything that we've done. I mean, again, when we talked about the HEPA filters, we put them in before other districts. We were getting our second allotment of them before some were even getting there first. I will have Frank do a staff at the next board meeting, a staff update just on the facilities piece so that we can reassure folks again. Now, do we have sinks in every classroom in the district? We absolutely do not. Have we looked at all of the guidelines? And we've actually shared that with our bargaining partners, what we're doing as well. And those are things that they have looked at. And a lot of the concerns you've heard elsewhere, you have not, we have not heard in our district, not to say that there aren't, aren't concerns. But we feel very confidently that our facilities are ready when the time is there to open up. We've even learned a little bit in the last months about the spread not being what it once was in terms of on surfaces. Now, that doesn't mean we're not cleaning and doing all those things. But we've learned a lot and I hope we continue to learn from this. Trent, I don't know, do you want to add anything to that?
No, we certainly have had those pieces in place. We've had our videos that we'd put out in November about what to expect when you return to campus. Although still apply, we're updating those with, with the latest pieces. I think the, the element that's being tweaked a little bit right now is again, going back to that six foot of distance. We're asking sites to go into those individual classrooms and kind of map out what that looks like with the number of kids they expect to be in that room so that we don't get caught off guard with, oops, we can't fit this class into this room. You know, with class sizes ebbing and flowing a little bit, there will be some adjustments that will have to be made. But that's kind of that site-specific piece that we're looking at now. Our filtration remains in place, our sanitization practices remain in place. The hand sanitizer in every room, the soap and paper towels at all the sinks, that's all still there, stocked, ready to go. We have supplies in the warehouse as well.
Okay.
You mind if I jump in and help on that facility? I serve on the liaison from the board on our facility committee. And I've asked Mr. Carmota point blank, Mr. Carmota, are we ready to come back to school today? And he answered 100% yes, we are ready. And not only are we ready, Ms. Creason, we're ready if something happens where there's a, you know, a child or a teacher is sick, those processes and plans are in place too for each classroom and each school. We are ready from a facility point.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Okay, but let's shift gears for just a second and then jump back. Regarding the model, so something that I think I heard Superintendent Kern say that really gave me an aha moment is, you know, I know that there's, not everyone's happy with the model that was chosen for hybrid when we go back to campus. And I know based on past conversations and something you highlighted today was, you know, that decision was made for, in an attempt to have as least disruption to students as possible with the, you know, we have a bunch of kids that are gonna lose their teacher in the middle of the year and you know, all kinds of other things that no one really wants to happen. But my question now is, well, we're so late in the game this year. You know, we implement this hybrid that, you know, that was chosen. Could we look at a different model to start next year in? So that can we reopen that conversation with the understanding like, okay, this is gonna work best for this year, but there won't be the danger of kids losing their teacher next year. They wouldn't have a teacher yet. So I'm wondering what you think about that.
Well, you know, I think as I mentioned earlier, what we would normally do is we would look at staffing and we would say, out of the 40,000 students that we have, or you know, 39,000 students that we have, this number is gonna go to each school. And, and, and that's how we staff our schools. Well, if we were to worry about how many are gonna go to distance learning and how many are gonna go here, we would have to survey every parent this spring and almost say, you're gonna have to make a commitment to what program you're gonna go in and stay in for the year. Another local district that's open to that, they actually lost about 5% of their total enrollment. We don't want to do that. So what we're going to do is we're gonna staff every school like they're going to return. So if an elementary school had 500 kids, I'm gonna staff it as if they have 500 kids. If all those kids don't show up, the benefit is we have smaller class size on those campuses. I don't need to worry about you know, which choice they make. As, as we have students enrolling into our homeschool program, or we have parents that say, I want to continue in a distance learning format, then we will identify either brand new staff, or like we did this year, we took some staff that said, I'd like to do the homeschool program. We pulled them over to the program and then we backfilled behind them. So I believe next year, we will overstaff the district by potentially a significant amount using one-time funds. And then now the challenge of that, I'll let the board know this now, is that we may get to a point where having extra retirements this year, we may have to come back to the, to the board next year on a night like tonight and on the PKS list layoffs of teachers. So I'm foreshadowing for you, we can't have it all, but we're going to make sure that we have the necessary staffing in place so that I don't have to make parents commit right now. Because that question of what school's gonna look like in August, I have no idea. I'm really hopeful. It's, and it almost takes the approach that Dr. McKibben asked me earlier. We would have to be asking parents and know exact numbers. Well, we're gonna staff schools very, very graciously. And we're gonna provide the additional support, just like we did for those other programs.
Do I understand though, the plan then is to staff schools graciously under the currently, the, the current hybrid model that would be implemented if we were to go back to campus today?
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm staffing schools as if students would return. So, you know, correct.
I'm sorry.
Yes. So, so for example, you and I are both second grade teachers at Ottoman. Normally we'd say, we're each gonna have 25, 26 kids. So, you know, that's, that's two classes worth. But we're gonna give Autumn two classes, Ottoman two classes of second grade. Well, we may only have 40 kids show up. Well, I'm still gonna staff as if we only have two in those grades. So you and I each only have 20 students. And so even if we talk about mitigating learning loss, because there may be five to 10 to 15 students who say, we're not ready to come back. We don't know the percentage of that. We'll get some idea this year when we see how much return. But I, our staffing next year is looking as if we're returning to school five days a week.
Okay, that's, that's great. Thank you for helping me understand. And it sounds like the only thing that would change that where we wouldn't be five days a week is if we never reopen. Or is there, so there's, that's one track. Is there anything in the county guide, county or state guidance that will be a stumbling block on getting us there for that long and having kids without the amount of time, you know, in the way of distance and and they could be together and time between cleanings and all that stuff?
There, there could be if the guidance doesn't change around spacing. But again, then what we would be doing is those parents that wanted their students in full distance learning, they wouldn't be enrolled in either your class or my class. They would be enrolled with another teacher. So, you know, let's say Trent's the teacher for kids in, that want to be in distance learning in second grade. Now, it's, we're not gonna have 20 kids from Ottoman that want to be in distance learning in second grade. So Trent may be teaching second grade distance learning, and it's a combination of three students from this school, five from here, four from here. He's got his students in distance learning. You and I have our in-person students. If all of a sudden we have to go to some hybrid, Trent's teaching full distance learning, you and I are teaching some kind of hybrid.
Okay. So the thought is, okay, and correct me if I'm wrong, then we get everyone back to school. It's the brand new year, five days a week, it'll naturally, or the thought is, it will likely naturally thin out with folks that are gonna go distance learning so that we really can't have kids there five days a week. That's the hope.
Well, I, my hopes is that, 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 that we see page rate decline where if we have classes that want to have 26 to 30 kids in them, we can do it. And we can do it five days a week. Now, my guess is we'll still probably have masks. But I'm hopeful that we start to see that herd immunity throughout the, our state, throughout our region. And we get enough folks vaccinated to where we can have kids back in class five days a week who want to be there. And even if it's a full school, we have a full school worth. I mean, that's, that's what we're staffing and planning for. Again, I, if it doesn't look like that, we'll be ready to go the other direction, but I'm gonna prepare for the best case scenario.
Got it. So we're gonna prepare, like you said, for the best case scenario. It's really state, we're still relying on state and county guidance to tell how many kids we could have together for X amount of time, but we're ready for best case scenario. And hopefully the guidance allows us to do so, or the numbers allow us to do so.
Yeah, I mean, when I think about it, we're five and a half months away from the start of school. Okay, so we've been in this almost a year. So that's, that's like half of what we've been through. And we think about how much changed in that period of time and the guidance and everything else. Who knows what could change between now and then. Paula's probably in those conversations frequently. And, and, and you know, I'm hopeful that those guidance continue to change as they see safer and safer conditions to where we can get absolutely students back to school five days a week. And I have parents asking me that all the time. What does it look like? I don't know, but that's what we're gonna prepare for.
No, and I appreciate something you just said there because again, as I said earlier today, I'm not a doctor, I'm not a scientist, so I do rely on the guidelines. And I'm not suggesting they get more just to meet the needs we want them to. I hope that the conditions really are safe enough to do the things that I'm hoping we could do. Okay, I'm almost done. This is gonna be the last thing. And Mr. Hernandez, I'm wondering if this is in line with what you were thinking in the way of direction to the superintendent. So I just want to repeat my hope, or what I would say is direct on my hope, what my direction to the superintendent would be to work for us to be able to either have kids back in, be back on campus in red before spring break, or have some plans so that we can get them back in a stalled purple before spring break, and that be the North Star. And I'm wondering, Mr. Hernandez and others, if that's what you had in mind or something else. I'm just wondering about the specifics of.
Is that okay if I just ask, I don't, I'm sorry, Ms. Creason, I do not mean to interrupt. I just, well, perhaps Mr. Hernandez ponders on, is that okay if I give Dr. McKibben an opportunity as well? I think we may all end up being in concurrence, but I wanted to just acknowledge that he hasn't had a chance to chime in. Is that okay with you, Ms. Creason?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just have a lot to.
No, no, no. Oh, and actually I wanted to make sure you, I don't want to cut you short either. So if that actually wasn't Mr. Hernandez, are you good?
Oh, absolutely. That's, that's why I was hoping to hear from everybody to be able to, before we get, ask to give direction, if there is direction to give at all. So absolutely.
Dr. McKibben, and thank you both. And I hope it doesn't sound like I'm interrupting or cutting anyone off.
You're good.
Go ahead, Mike.
For some time, I've been convinced that our, our students are better off in our classrooms than they are in our malls. And in some cases in our congested neighborhoods and some of the places that I see them. What we're doing, we're doing has indeed some risk, but what we have done, I believe, is by going by the science, by putting safety first, I believe that we're ready to go back. I believe that we're ready to do all of the roles. For example, the role that with 57% of our students on free and reduced lunch, we are one of the primary providers of food for kids in this area. We provide thousands of lunches and that's the thing. And, and, and it's a critical role. Another critical role that I believe that we have to work at has to do with dealing with the mental health, building with the social, emotional kinds of things. And that's gonna be a very tough, tough row for us as we move back. But I have a great deal of faith in our teachers, in our classified staff, and particularly in our families. We, we can't do this without the families checking that temperature of that child when they come to school in the day. We're, we've got an enormous amount of learning loss to deal with. Parents, we're gonna have, you're gonna have to be checking a lot of homework, doing a lot of things. We're gonna have to have a very, very robust summer school program in order to get us where we need to be. And but it's risky. We're all gonna be working harder than we can imagine. But I think we have a direction, and I kind of agree with Ms. Costa. The, the direction that we've gone has been not without cost and not without risk. And what we're gonna do in the future is not without cost and risk. But to get, as Ms. Costa said, working together, doing things together, trusting each other, we can get this done. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McKibben. And I think to circle back to some of the comments made, what I'm hearing, and I invite my colleagues to crack me if I'm wrong, but the the direction to the superintendent is to continue to work towards bringing back our students in person in the hybrid model in red prior to spring break and to Ms. Costa and Dr. McKibben's point that is consistent with what the work and effort that has been taking place. And if that's not the case, making a contingency for if we're not out of red by then. That's what I understood the direction to be in. I think that was clear about in how it was requested and how I re-articulated it.
Re-articulate it one more time because please.
One more time.
Sure. The direction being continue efforts to bring back students in red prior to spring break or a contingency thereof if we are not as a community. Um back in red at that point. And that is consistent with kind of current and ongoing efforts.
May I, can I talk? Are you going through?
Yeah, no, um, Ms. Chris, and go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I think we might wanna add some specificity to where in the red, because that's so nebulous these days, right? Uh, five days, ten days, like where in the red might be helpful. And I'm sorry, can't.
Um, well, Ms. Chris, and I was just gonna say, you know, uh, but the as and and I made this clear when I spoke with our labor partners on Monday, that it's five days in the red. Um, you know, that's the new guidance. That's what we're gonna work towards. So, um, I mean, I think I'm I'm very, very crystal clear on that, that once we get to the point where the state would say, as I mentioned earlier, normally that changes on a Tuesday. We would have to give um uh, really, as I think about this, and I, and again, I gotta be careful because I can't go too much, but a a process where we would end up notifying people that we're moving along a path. We notify and then so that when we get to red, we are able to five days later, which would be the following Monday, bring students back to in-person learning.
Okay, thank you. And President Viasquez, and I heard if I did, if I heard, please confirm that I heard you correctly, that we're also placing the including the um before spring break language in direction.
I mean, I've heard, um, that's our, I've heard that's our, that's our goal. That's um where we all predict um and hope that the numbers are, but I also understood that to be the case, both in the direction from Mr. Hernandez and yourself and from the team. So I think that part about before spring break is clear and um clear direction to Mr. Curt and included.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the clarification.
Superintendent Kern, is that uh first, Mr. Hernandez and the whole team, is that direction clear? And does that work for us? It certainly works for me, and I think fulfills the requests and the discussion and the direction. Mr. Hernandez, you're on mute, but I think.
Um, I may be reaching here, and if I am, please let me know. Uh, I asked Mr. Kern on purpose if he could give us a goal date. And that date that he put in red, that you know, that he said the week before spring break, and that would be Monday, March twenty-second. Is that correct? So the date?
Correct.
Okay. So if we are in red, it's it's a it's a moot point. We're probably gonna be that, you know, that's our goal. It could be sooner, but that's that's a goal, which is great. Is it far reaching to say that if we're not in red, that we could possibly work, be in, that be the goal even in purple?
Um to to bring back students on that date?
Mm-hmm, in purple.
Well, it it if we were, it would only be elementary.
That that's what I'm saying. If that's, that's.
I- if that's the clear direction of the board, then as we as we, that then that clear direction from the board was we want, we would want elementary students back on the twenty-second, regardless of whether we're in red or purple.
Isn't that what you were saying, Ms. Chris?
That's, yeah, that's what I thought they were saying.
That's what I thought you were saying too.
So then we would need to, you know, work towards that. Um, and um
I mean, if we hit red, I I assume just because we're negotiating, trying to work something out with K through six, if purple, if we hit red, we could, we're, you know, and we're not, what am I saying? Just because we're negotiating doesn't take us out of, take it, kick us out of our current agreement. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So why not work towards that goal?
That's what I think currently underway. And so I think that, I mean, we're all working towards that similar direction.
But the difference is we that that we would say and that we would try to get back on March twenty-second in purple, even for for K through six. That I think that's the difference.
Uh huh.
And that's my direction. Now, I I would love to give direction in that, in that manner.
Yeah, well, I think we have to give direction as as a board and just to be, you know, it's a report, not an action item right now. So.
Okay.
Okay, so then that brings back something else. And so it does, if it, if this is a report, not an action item, so do we do need an action? To give direction?
We don't. We don't need an action.
No, to give direction, but the the clarification I'll make is to to kind of give direction, we have to do it as a group. And so.
Understood. I heard the action item, Mr. McKibben, I heard um the action item called out versus a report, and that's why I asked for clarification. So just to say, my piece is, I agree with, um, and I understand we have to there are quotes, act as a board, and I agree with what Mr. Hernandez.
I think at this point, we've all shared where we feel and where we're at is um individual members. Mr. Kern, do you think you feel further, do you feel like you need further direction from us, somewhere to go?
Um, I I feel like the board has been clear with their direction.
Okay.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none. Um, with that, we have already taken public comment on this item. So, uh, Ms. Drell and then Superintendent Kern, thank you for the report. We are now at item two, I two, Gateway International School Renewal Petition. Ms. Flagler, please begin when you're ready.
Good evening, President Viasquez, members of the board, Superintendent Kern and Ms. Cunningham. On November thirtieth, Gateway International School submitted a charter renewal petition to the district. And on January twelfth, had upheld a public hearing before this board. The superintendent is recommending that the Board of Education grant the petition renewal for Gateway International School for a term of five years, starting on July first, twenty twenty-one. The district's renewal re- uh charter review team has thoroughly studied the renewal petition. And Gateway staff has provided all necessary information, additions and or changes as requested during the review process. The charter renewal petition is in compliance with education codes four seven six zero five and four seven six zero seven. Present tonight, our Gateway International School Principal Joy Decoy and Gateway Community Charter's Deputy Superintendent Jason Sample to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flagler. I declare the topic of the Gateway International Charter School Renewal Petition a public hearing, and it is now open for public comments. Mr. Allen, are there any public comments? And I'll just um remind our um visitors that this is in relation to item I two, the Gateway International Charter School Renewal Petition.
And if you've joined us on Zoom tonight and would like to offer a comment on this specific item, now would be your chance to do that by raising your hand. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, President Viasquez.
Okay, there being no comments, um, I declare the public hearing closed. Do board members have any questions or comments? I see Universal had nods of no, except for Dr. McKibben. Are you good, Dr. McKibben?
I'm I'm gonna make a motion to uh approve the charter for five years.
Okay, um, there is a motion to approve the charter for the five-year term from July first, twenty twenty-one through um June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hernandez. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that was unanimous. With that, we are now at item I three, the California Montessori Project San Juan Campus Charter School Renewal Petition. Um, Ms. Flagler, please begin when you're ready.
Thank you. On January fourteenth, California Montessori Project Charter Schools San Juan campuses submitted a charter renewal petition to the superintendent's office. Superintendent is recommending that the board hold a public hearing for this petition. Presenting the public hearing information for CMP as a team led by CMP Superintendent Brett Barley. And Mr. Barley, you may begin your presentation.
Thank you. Let me get the presentation up here and hopefully it broadcasts for all of you.
We can't see it. It's not quite in a presentation. There we go. Perfect.
There you go. Working, working good?
Yep.
We'll dive right in. Hi, my name is Brett Barley. I'm the superintendent with the California Montessori Project. Uh, I've been with the organization for two years, and it's just been an absolute joy to work with this organization and to get to know the San Juan uh school district and the school board. Uh, I was drawn to this organization after being a superintendent for a system down in the Central Valley that is focused on serving migrant farmworker children. Um, and I was really intrigued to come here because of CMP's uh mission to serve um students across the greater Sacramento area and to make what is usually a costly private education public and available to all kids from all different backgrounds uh here in our region. We have been serving kids in um San Juan Unified for twenty years. Uh, we have had an outstanding relationship with the board and the community that entire time. And we're looking forward to uh continuing that work moving forward. With me tonight are our three principals uh from our San Juan Unified Schools. Um, and we have some public comment as well. We've practiced this presentation in advance, and we believe we can be in and out in under twelve minutes because we know it is a very late hour for all of you. So with that, we'll go ahead and just dive right in, and our first uh campus is uh going to be presented by Ms. Kathleen Mers, our principal. Kathleen? Kathleen, we can see you, or I can see you, but we can't hear you. All right, um, in the interest of the time, we'll move forward. Uh, the American River Campus is in the old Little John uh school. Um, it is in Fair Oaks, and we have just completed um what is an outstanding renovation project with the district. Um, we had jointly applied for a grant, and there is now a multimillion dollar renovation at this school site. The campus is beautiful. We would love to host you there and introduce you to uh some of the four hundred and and change kids that are at the uh American River Campus.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, sorry. I don't know what was wrong. I'm sorry. I'll just end it with, CMP has a climate of um climate and culture of collaboration. With respect, our schools have a strong commitment to family and student engagement by offering dynamic learning opportunities for the children. And at the CMP San Juan campuses, we hold regular student and family events and maintain open communication with our families and staff using Parent Square platform. Earlier in the school year, our families at the American River Campus demonstrate their appreciation for the CMP teachers and staff um with a surprise yard sign, which you can see up there as well.
Thank you so much, Kathleen.
Thank you.
Next up is our Carmichael Campus and our Principal Lorian Spiller.
CMP Carmichael Campus has been located at the Los Sierra Community Center in Carmichael since two thousand eleven. As the largest, the largest of the CMP campuses, we serve six hundred and sixty TK through eighth grade students. Our campus includes twenty-nine classrooms, a large library, field and play areas, a gymnasium, and space for enrichment programs. Our campus benefits from its proximity to the Coob's Nature Area, um which is pictured here. Close access to this local nature preserve has enabled our students in typical years to participate in guided outdoor activities and build fundamental skills and observation as an introduction to scientific learning. This is an example of how CMP San Juan Schools and Montessori Education emphasize field studies to help students apply and extend their learning. As CMP students mature, they attend more in-depth field trips. Fourth to sixth grade students attend regional outdoor educational programs for two or three days at Cuomo and Sly Park to extend their science studies and participate in team building. These types of opportunities are deepened for our middle school students who also participate in the planning of their field trips to locations like the Marin Headlands and Motherload Ropes Course and lead student-run businesses throughout the year to support the fundraising for these trips.
Thank you, Lorian. Next up is our Orangeville Campus and Principal Maria Ostendorf.
The CMP Orangeville Campus serves two hundred sixty-four students at the Thomas Coleman San Juan site at Beach and Central Avenues in Orangeville. Each classroom is a warm community of multi-age students in a stimulating environment with highly trained teachers and materials that invite exploration and research. Montessori's materials are pictured on the left. The Montessori materials bring a hands-on quality to the classroom with children learning through self-discovery. CMP Orangeville also has a dedicated gardening program that provides life science, education, and a love for living things. Gardening provides our students with rich learning experiences and gets children outside and deeply involved in nature's works. Pictured in the middle is our gardening um staff person working with students last year right out front. All San Juan, LCP San Juan teachers hold a California Teaching credential as well as their Montessori certification. Each classroom also has an instructional assistant to support the students. CMP's teaching staff are nurturing, collaborative, lifelong learners acting as respectful models and guides for their students as they develop and grow. Pictured is Debbie Oliver with one of her students. Thank you.
Thanks, Maria. Now, the the board, I'm sure, is quite familiar with this, um, having just gone through uh an uh an earlier charter renewal. But this summer, the California Department of Education did put out a data file for all charter schools in the state that were up for renewal. And pursuant to AB fifteen oh five, placed them in high, middle, and low performing tracks. All of the CMP campuses, you can see the San Juan campuses here highlighted, were in either the um high performing or the middle performing track. And campuses, uh, schools in the middle performing track are to be considered for a five-year charter renewal. The next couple of slides are very data-heavy. We'll move through them really quickly. Um, they're not intended to make a case that CMP is any better or worse than than the state or the district. Uh, but merely because the new charter law asks us to make our case and present our data around our academic and uh student achievement scores. So first here is our dashboard. You can see that CMP score is in the green range for both chronic absenteeism, suspension rates, and in English Language Arts, uh, and in the yellow range for mathematics. Um, over the past uh four years, uh, where we have had testing, excluding last year, CMP has performed higher than the state and the district in English Language Arts um and in the California Science Assessment in fifth and eighth grade, showcasing some of our well-rounded educational opportunities. Um, and then in the areas where you would hope to have low numbers, we have low numbers. Our suspension rates are much lower than the state and the district and our um chronic absenteeism rates are also quite low in comparison to the state and the district. And then finally, something that we're really proud of at CMP, and that is um our commitment to serving students with disabilities. And you can see in this slide that CMP serves um about thirty-three percent more students with disabilities um as of last year than the state average. Uh, we're really proud that families seek us out for our inclusive practices. Um, and that word has gotten out into the community that we're, we're a great spot for for kids with disabilities to go to school. So I'm gonna leave it there for now and then hand it off to the people that you really wanna hear from, teachers, parents, and kids. So first up is Ms. Whitney, a middle school teacher at our American River Campus.
Hello, uh, my name is Ms. Whitney. Um, I'm Whitney Mathewson, and I'm very excited to have landed as a teacher at the California Montessori Project. Uh, the teachers all over are a unique nexus with connections to students, parents, support staff, and administration. It is a balance between guiding and mentoring others, yet continuing to personally learn and grow. For there to be a harmony in this position, it requires a clear vision and commitment from all to uphold these values. And at CMP, you see these layers of leadership working symbiotically for the greater good. The vision of CMP is to provide a Montessori education that supports the intellectual, social, and emotional development of every child. I believe this vision extends beyond the students and includes the whole CMP community. For example, our administration supports the teachers in high caliber Montessori training programs as well. For example, our administration supports the teachers in high caliber Montessori training programs as well as other professional development. And our parents are invited to monthly principals' cafes and Montessori 101 courses. One way CMP specifically works to achieve its vision is by promoting independence. Again, this doesn't sit at a student level, but it is a scaffolding of the whole community. Our administration guides independence in teachers, providing them with the tools needed to be successful and promoting autonomy. CMP teachers do the same for their students, and the multi-age classrooms provide opportunities for mentorship amongst students as well. Next slide, please. As we all learn and grow and build together, we take our micro-community out into the macro. And as you've already heard, our students at CMP have the opportunity to gain independence in real-world hands-on experiences through our many annual field trips and immersions. And of course, this looks a little different this year, but I can assure you that our teachers have gotten very creative this year. And when we can get back to a little bit of normalcy, I really look forward to having our students journey back out to my family's farm. Last year, we were able to get all American River students out to my farm at least once. We learned about farming and we became agro-scientists and we acted as local marketers and microeconomists. And it was a really great experience for our students to prepare for the global community. My hope is that we can continue to grow our farm school program, or as Dr. Montessori called it, bird kinder, and offer it to all CMP students. So as I said at the very beginning, I am very grateful to have landed and to have grown roots at CMP. The school is a gift to our students, parents, teachers, and administrators. And more than ever, we need our interconnected micro-community to buttress together. So thank you for your time and consideration and a five-year renewal for our CMP San Juan campuses.
Next, we have our parent. Amanda, are you there?
I'm here. Hello, my name is Amanda Wucker-Aller. I am the mother of two girls at the CMP Carmichael Campus. Our oldest daughter, Julie, started at CMP in the TK Program seven years ago. Julie loved it and was extremely happy, but we soon realized she was having a difficulty reading. After evaluation and testing, we learned that Julie has dyslexia and dysgraphia. With Julie receiving special education services, my husband and I were afraid that she could be singled out. We soon found out, though, that this wasn't the case at CMP. Julie would leave the classroom for her support during times when other students were working on individual assignments or in small group lessons at different places throughout the classroom. The other students didn't even realize she was leaving. Also, because students of different grades are in the same classroom, the older students can help the younger ones. This helped reinforce for Julie the things that she was learning. It also gave her an opportunity to feel smart and happy. She was never singled out for being behind, since there's a room full of students of different ages and in different levels, all working at their own pace. Every year, we would see the progress that she was having, but we still had concerns that if she had a new teacher, she would have to start the progress all over again. Our fears were once again put at ease because in a Montessori program, teachers stay with students for multiple years. Julie transitioned between grades. Her teacher stayed the same. They had an intimate knowledge of where she was and what she needed to focus on. When Julie went back to school in the fall, having the same teacher meant that they already knew her academically and all of her strengths and weaknesses. I'm very proud to say that at this year's evaluation, Julie is now at grade level for all of her subjects. She will continue at CMP through middle school. And when I ask her if she thinks she could have done this at a traditional school environment, she immediately tells me no. First, because apparently everyone loves her at CMP. And second, because when she was struggling with different concepts like reading and math, she was able to use the manipulatives and the Montessori materials to help her understand and solve her problems. And because the environment offered her freedoms to learn at her own pace and in her own way to help her be successful. Now, we are just one family at CMP, but we can say without a doubt that CMP helped our child be confident, happy, and healthy. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And our last but most important public commenter, Isabella.
Hello, my name is Isabella Hayes. I'm in sixth grade. I've been going to CMP since first grade. I go to school at the Orangeville Campus, but before that, I went to Carmichael. I really enjoy CMP because we have this thing called jobs in our classroom, where we have to finish all of our jobs by the end of school. I personally like this because it prepares me for real-life circumstances. Another reason why I like CMP is because in fourth grade, older kids were helping me learn the new environment of the classroom. And now that I'm older, I get the chance to be a mentor and a role model for kids in fourth grade. Personally, CMP has helped me progress on my own level. For example, I really enjoy public speaking. Not only have I had over 30 presentations in my classroom in the last two years, I've also gotten the chance to participate in a public speaking club called Toastmasters. I even get the chance to speak in front of you all today. Distance learning has been a huge part, has been a huge change in my normal everyday routine. CMP is doing its best to keep their methods the same. For me, it has been a little bit of a challenge. CMP has made materials for us to bring home that we normally share in the classroom. This has really helped me because I did not have those materials around at my house, but now I do. With these materials, I can do simple math and language assignments, even if I didn't have these resources. Thank you for considering the new five-year renewal.
Thank you so much, CMP team members. Michelle, that concludes our presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. I declare the topic of the California Montessori Project San Juan Campus Charter School Renewal Petition a public hearing, and it is now open for public comment. Mr. Allen, are there any public comments on this item before us, which again is the Charter School Renewal Petition?
We do have two hands raised at this time, and I would remind our participants on the Zoom call with us today that this is an opportunity to comment on this specific item. If you have a comment on another item, there is an opportunity to comment at the end of the meeting. And with that, we do have two, if you are ready to begin, President Viascos.
Yes, please begin. Thank you.
Our first will be from user SA when you are ready.
I fully support your renewing their charter. I have worked for them as a teacher and I currently have kids who attend there, grandkids who attend there, and it's fabulous. They have met the kids' learning needs. And as a professional special education teacher, I was thrilled to be in an environment where we could truly meet the kids where they were at. It is rare and beautiful, and it's a little slice of heaven. So I firmly support your renewing their charter. Thank you.
And thank you for your comment. Our next comment will be from Caroline Castaneda when you are ready.
Good evening again, board members and CMP staff. I am in firm support of the renewal of the CMP charter. In addition to being a parent of two San Juan high schoolers, I'm also a CMP parent. Our three daughters have attended both the American River and Carmichael campuses over the last 12 years, starting with our oldest in kindergarten and ending with our youngest in eighth grade now. We are in the last months of our journey with CMP and have truly loved being a part of the CMP learning community and family. CMP has honored and nurtured each of my daughter's unique gifts and challenges with grace and courtesy, peace education, and hands-on self-directed group and group learning. In distance learning, Ms. Lorian and the CMP Carmichael staff went above and beyond to create safe opportunities to affirm our community traditions, build a sense of student belonging, and offer general and special education services without interruption. I thank CMP for the opportunity to have a publicly funded, high-fidelity Montessori education. Thank you.
And thank you for your comment. President Viascos, that was our final comment.
Allen, there being no further comments, I declare the public hearing closed at this time. Do any board members have any questions or comments?
No comment. Thank you.
Seeing none, seeing that, I think I got everybody's head nod. Seeing no further questions or comments, action is scheduled for April 13. We are now at item I four. Mr. O'Appalo, please begin when you are ready.
Thank you, President Viascos. Members of the Board Superintendent Curtis Cunningham, now I bring forward for discussion of the superintendent's recommendation to adopt Resolution 20, or excuse me, 3023, eliminating or reducing particular kinds of services and Resolution 3024, which establishes a criteria in the process. I believe I'm joined by Dan Carlson. If we can answer any questions that you have about this item, and again, it is a discussion item, we will come back for action at second meeting or first meeting in March.
Thank you, Mr. O'Appalo. Mr. Allen, are there any public comments on this item?
We would invite anybody to offer a public comment on this specific item at this time by raising your hand. And seeing no raised hands, President Viascos, we have no public comment.
Any board members have questions? Seeing none, action is scheduled on this item for March 9. We are now at item I five. Mr. O'Appalo.
Thank you again, President Viascos. At this time, we are bringing forward this recommendation to adopt Resolution 3025. Again, reducing particular kinds of services in adult education at 3026, which is establishing the criteria in the process. Again, I can answer any questions. And again, this is a discussion item coming back on March 9.
Thank you, Mr. O'Appalo. Mr. Allen, are there any public comments on this item?
We do not currently have any hands raised for public comment, President Viascos.
Seeing none. Do any board members have any questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, this is not an action item. Action is scheduled for March 9. Thank you. We are now at item I six, Mr., or March 9, sorry. We are now at item I six, Mr. O'Appalo.
Again, I bring forward for discussion a superintendent's recommendation to adopt Resolution 3027, which is reducing or eliminating certain kinds of classified positions effective June 30, 2021 because of lack of funds or and/or lack of work. And again, I can answer any questions you have about this item. Again, it is a discussion item that will come back on the 9th of March.
Thank you, Mr. O'Appalo. Mr. Allen, are there any public comments on this item?
We do not have any hands raised at this time, President Viascos.
Seeing none. Do any of my colleagues have questions or comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, this is scheduled for action for March 9. We are at item I seven, variable term waiver, Mr. O'Appalo.
Thank you again, President Viascos. The superintendent is recommending that the board approve the submission of a variable waiver to the California Commission on Teaching Credentialing effective the first, excuse me, the 4th of January 2021 to June 30 of 2021 for one single subject math teacher. Again, I can answer any questions you have, and this is an action item.
Thank you, Mr. O'Appalo. Mr. Allen, do we have any public comments?
We do not have any hands raised at this time.
Okay, do any board members have questions or comments? Dr. McKibben?
Yes, Mr. O'Appalo. Are we expecting any more variable term waivers later, or is this what we expect for this period?
This is what we expect, but what happens is oftentimes is the county does an audit on us and finds somebody else. They may request one. I actually spoke to the county office about having this as a consent item, but they are requiring it to come through as an agenda item.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the submission of one variable term waiver to the California Commission on Teaching Credentialing?
So moved.
It's been moved by Dr. McKibben. Is there a second? I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. I thought Pam was gonna do it, so I was hesitant.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous. Thank you. We are now at item I eight, assignment of teachers outside regular base credential, Mr. O'Appalo.
Thank you, President Viascos. Again, this is following up on the audit from the county. And we are, the superintendent is recommending that we adopt Resolution 3011 for the assignment of certificated employees who hold regular base credentials outside of authorizations during 2021. This is an addendum item that came earlier this year in, I believe, the late October.
Thank you. Mr. Allen, do we have any public comments on this item?
We do not have any hands raised for comment at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Dr. McKibben?
Mr. O'Appalo, this appears to be fewer of these than we've had in the past. Am I correct in that? And if I am, do you know what might be the reason?
It is an addendum. This is an addendum to which, an item which came in October, Dr. McKibben.
Okay.
These are, these are actually people that we picked up to the audit that had, we didn't identify.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, this is an action item. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution Number 3011 as amended authorizing the assignment of certificated employees to areas outside their authorized credential during the 2020-2021 school year?
Move the item.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Costa. It's been moved by Ms. Costa, seconded by Dr. McKibben. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that was unanimous. We are now at item I nine, CSBA Delegate Assembly Election. Every year, the California School Board Association asks districts to elect representatives to the CSBA Delegate Assembly for the designated region. Mr. Allen, are there any public comments on this item?
We do not have any hands raised for public comment at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. So there are, I think, five spots and, yes, five vacancies in our subregion and four candidates on the ballot. Do any board members wish to nominate a write-in candidate for that final spot? Again, there are five vacancies for candidates. Seeing no desire for a write-in candidate. Does the board wish to vote for the four candidates on the ballot who are Kelly Kelly, Lisa Kaplan, Chinua Rhodes, and Ed Short?
Do our colleagues, how do our colleagues feel, Mr. Dr. McKibben? Ms. Costa, you represent us. What do you, what say you?
The, the ones that win, yeah, I don't see any reason to, to add anybody, and, and I would move the item.
I would second the item.
All right, that's, sounds like a good enough endorsement to me. And I don't see any further questions or comments on this item. And there is, there is a motion to cast a vote for Kelly Kelly, Lisa Kaplan, Chinua Rhodes, and Ed Short. And it was seconded by Dr., or it was moved by Dr. McKibben, seconded by Ms. Costa. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that was unanimous. We are now at item J, Board Report. Are there any board reports? The next person off mute is Ms. Costa. Please go ahead.
I just want to compliment staff for the immunization clinic at Del Campo. It was above and beyond anything. And to see the level of detail that took place there, they really did a phenomenal job. And volunteers did a phenomenal job. It was just well-run. And I'm excited that we're going to have it again this next weekend to actually immunize more of our community. So thank you to staff. I know it meant a lot of extra time on your plate, so thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Costa. Any further board reports? Dr. McKibben, okay, Dr. McKibben.
I'll do one quick one. I listened to the Special Education CAC drop-in on, I guess that was last night. I'm so impressed with, with both the Special Education staff and the parents that call in and ask very good questions and so forth. And I just think it's just a really good way to do things, and I wanted to. And I just think it's just a really good way to do things, and I wanted to say thank you to them.
Thank you, Dr. McKibben. Going once. Alrighty. Um, with that, we are at item K, future agenda items. Do any board members wish to add anything to the future agenda items?
Ms. Viascos, are you planning to have another COVID report on the ninth of March? You know, an update on where we are?
I'm sure there will be an update. I know we don't have, the agenda is definitely still in the works from a number of different perspectives, but I think if not a formal update, then definitely a staff report.
Okay.
Do, would you like a formal update? I mean, that's, this is the time to indicate if you want something different.
I mean, I, I think that just a little report would be great on where we are and how we're trending, what our numbers are, you know? Heck, we can be in red by then, who knows, you know, right? I mean, I mean, cross our fingers. So, I mean, just to kind of know what we're doing, how we're doing, I think would be nice. I think our community would like to hear it. I think our parents would like to know.
Agreed, and just, I know that this has been a topic of discussion, I think even at the last board meeting, but even if it is in the staff report section, I think we've talked about kind of itemizing so that individuals coming to make public comment are aware of that, and just some general like subject lines of what might be hit. Mr. Kern, looks like you'd like to add?
Yeah, I, I think we could. I'll share with you, I, it is hard sometimes when we have to hear people speak on the same item twice and visitor comment, and then again later, so I, I, but we do, we do, as Ms. Viascos said, if we're gonna do a staff update in there, we plan to say staff update on COVID. I think one of the challenges again is just like this, with everything changing so much, Saul, is that to put something out beforehand, you know, sometimes our deadline actually for materials for the board meeting for two weeks from now is actually tomorrow at noon. So that's why we've been using the board report option more with this, because it allows us the flexibility. But I'll talk with President Viascos about it, and we could, we can do it either way. I, I will say, dependent upon how things go the next three days, we may have to come back for a special meeting for something else before then. And, and I'll talk with President Viascos about that again as well, which, which could be next week.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. We are now at item L, Visitor Comments. Mr. Allen, I believe we do have some visitor comments, so as you work to bring up the clock, I'll just remind the public that comments are limited to two minutes, and under the Ralph M. Brown Act, the board is not allowed to comment on items that are not on the agenda, so we are not ignoring your comments. We just can't respond to any individual comments. The superintendent can refer items to staff who will follow up with you, and I'll let Mr. Allen or Mr. Reed take it from here.
Thank you, President Viascos. We do have two individuals who have raised their hand for public comment at this time. We'll start with Kevin Jones when you are ready.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
We can.
Okay, I appreciate it. Just on that last issue of whether there needs to be a COVID update from a parent perspective, tonight has been illuminating because we've actually had to been able to listen to board members talk about these issues. My concern as a parent is that if it's not an action item or an item where you guys can comment on, the next board meeting is March ninth. We are tentatively trying to open on the twenty-second. The twenty-third will be the next meeting after that. So if there is no discussion for the public to hear from the board and be able to interact with the board, we will not have that choice before we are potentially opening, and as a parent, that's troubling because I think a lot has been said and done, and progress has been made tonight. So I am asking as a parent that you guys consider putting it on the agenda for the ninth in a fashion where board members can comment on updates as they're coming in. I know Superintendent Kern, you just mentioned, we might be in a very, very different situation at that point, but if we're not, then we're still looking at that question of whether or not you can open up in the red on the twenty-second or even in the purple. And it got a little weird for parents listening tonight, the discussion about whether the board was directing Mr. Kern to pursue opening in the purple. There were two voices saying, do that. Ms. Viascos, President, Board President, kind of assented and said, I think there's direction been said, but not really. There were two members that didn't render an opinion on that, and I know Mr. Kern said he had the guidance, but from the parents' perspective, what we've heard tonight is K through six should be opening up in the purple, and it didn't sound like there was any objection to that. Also, if you guys would consider a new survey, only because, as you all know, the two days a week doesn't work for anybody, but if that's what we're left with, it is, but please focus on it next week, or next meeting. Thank you.
And thank you for your comments. Our next comment will be from SA when you are ready.
I just want to end the meeting on a positive note, at least ending it for me. I don't know when you guys get to actually go home. It's been a long, arduous meeting tonight with some pretty heady subjects. So I want to thank you for asking when the return date is and for going on record as doing so. I sincerely appreciate you standing up for the families in this district, the students, the teachers, all of us who want to go back. Thank you. Zima, I want to thank you for asking for specifics every time and asking for a date. I really sincerely appreciate your asking for specifics tonight. Pam, for bringing up that the kids don't return if we don't have union approval. We have to have staff willing to go back, so I appreciate you're hitting that point. Michael, for asking about the safety and the air filters and those kind of things. That's so important because it's, stuff is sitting for a while, dust can gather, even in a great environment. And for reminding that kids are wandering this city without being in school. It's not safe. It's not safe what I've seen them doing. Paula, I want to thank you for running every darn board meeting. Sitting there and running the meeting and keeping track of stuff. I just appreciate that. It's not an easy job. I know, you know, you sit there and try to get through every meeting, and you do it, darn it, so good job. I just appreciate that. Trent Allen, nice transparency with the slides and presenting the information. And Kent Kern, I appreciate you're trying to explain details tonight and being more transparent, and the fact that you even know details this late at night is remarkable. So at that, I'm gonna leave the meeting, and I hope you're all able to leave it soon quickly. Good night.
And thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Tenille Stewart when you are ready.
Hello, board. Um, so I only caught the tail end of my meeting because I was running my own meeting until after eight. So, party. I have questions. One is with the hopeful return of our students on campus, at least minimum K through six. I've been informed that special education students that aren't in moderate to severe classrooms continue only in the Zoom format. So I'm highly concerned regarding this. I have one child that is severely dyslexic. She has push-in time at Center for IEP, and she has resource time in the classroom outside of just push-in time. And so how is this going to be functionally provided in a Zoom format for her? Currently, her services are inadequate in what she's receiving, and now you're telling me that's gonna continue and probably not even provide for the push-in time into her classroom for the teacher. So I'm highly concerned, and I think that needs to be addressed. If these teachers are vaccinated, then they should be able to go from classroom to classroom to support these students as needed. Second thing is, you guys still promised touchscreen Chromebooks, and I know Trent Allen has been super helpful, and he's emailed me about this, but I'm gonna keep harping on it. You guys said this in September. You said, oh, it's been delayed, but they still haven't come through, and we're at the end of the school year. Like, come on. If you're gonna torture my kindergartner with continuing to be on a Zoom platform, even two days a week or three days a week, she needs the correct devices provided. Thirdly, it would be helpful if there was information for whenever we return in person to specifics about the school site pickups and drop-offs, because school sites aren't releasing this information to parents, and we need a mechanism to be able to plan for childcare, work schedules, cohorts, whatever. So those are my things that I would like to address and question that. Thank you.
And thank you for your comment. Our final comment for the evening will come from Ms. Velvet Cream.
Hi, it's Skaatha Allison. I apologize for the screen name at this time. Thank you. I had made a comment earlier asking about the safety plan, and it was well-explained and broken down. I appreciate your time in going over the details and it would be, even though things are constantly changing, it would definitely be an ideal situation if those kind of materials. I understand you're presenting them tonight, so you'll share them tomorrow, but that kind of communication was very helpful, and I also appreciate the actual choosing or encouraging an actual date for return to maybe motivate or accelerate some negotiation and communication processes and make it easier for families to kind of have an idea of you know, in-person learning, but also not feel so ambiguous. So even though you might not be able to meet those goals, just making goals and communicating on where you're at in relationship to that is really helpful for many people, maybe myself included, many, many other parents in feeling connected to the board and feeling that you're actually listening to what a lot of parents are saying, maybe, even, even though they're saying it maybe unkindly or aggressively. I think that kind of forward movement is helpful for everyone. So thank you especially for your time, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
And thank you for your comment, President Viascos. That was our final comment of the evening.
Thank you very much to everybody who joined us for public comment, staff. Thank you colleagues for hanging in there. That is the end of visitor comments, and we do not need to return to closed session. So at this time, at this time, we are adjourned. Thank you all. Thanks. Good night.
Thank you, everybody, for joining us. The next meeting of the San Juan Unified Board of Education is scheduled for March ninth, with public session expected to begin at six thirty PM. We do expect to be broadcasting on Zoom and YouTube once again, so please join us at www.sanjuan.edu/boardmeeting to log in and join us for all the great information and discussion. Thank you. Have a good night.